Our, there's a whole bunch more. We are continuing our September 12th, 2023 Board of County Commissioners meeting. It is 5:06. The budget presentation is an agenda item of our traditional day's meeting. It is 5:06. Anyone that was interested in giving end-of-the-day general comments for 5:05 public comment, if you've submitted a slip already, let me know. If you haven't and you'd like to make public comment separate of the budget hearing, if you do make a public, general public comment, and it is on the topic of the budget, when we get into the budget, you are not able to speak again on the same topic. So if you have a general comment having nothing to do with the budget, we would hear from you now. If you have a budget comment that you would like to make now, you can. But when we get into the details of the budget and you think of something else you would like to say, you won't be able to then. So your choice, anyone looking to make either a general commission comment. Sir? Please, now is that your form for this? Terrific. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is James Campo, and thank you for having me tonight. I'm limited in my time. I just wanted to praise Stacy Heatherington for being a tough mother. And she has had a great reputation of being able to say no to the kids. And tonight is budget time, and you might have to say no. And I want to praise you, I want to praise you for your courage, Stacy. Thank you so much for all you do for us.
Well, it's too late. And compliments, I gotta let you have the compliment. Anyone else? General comment. Sir? Please state your name for the record, sir.
Corey Crowley. They complained that I was talking, is this, can you hear me well?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm well-known, but I'm not known very well. And so I wanted to give you guys a little bit of introduction about some of my past and so maybe, and it's going to relate to what I'm going to talk about. So I graduated from the University of Florida with a degree in mathematics. I have a degree in, master's degree in statistics. I worked in Melbourne for Harris on rockets. And I went to work for Ryder Systems in Miami for the executives, giving analysis like the one I'm about to give you here now. And I wanted to give you a little bit of background so that you took what I'm about to say a little bit more seriously. So the CRA, the point of the CRAs is a separate point from the general fund. And what I mean by that is that it's an investment fund. The concept is that we make investments. And so all of our monies should be considered as an investment. That is not the way things are looked at necessarily right now. We have a capital program that gives money to businesses to paint their buildings. We have, we invest in bike racks and sidewalks and things like that for improvements. But the proper way to look at a CRA is on return on investment, is that we spend $5 million and that, how much are we going to return because they're going to increase the tax base? And so the way the money should be spent, the first, the first pass of the money should always be on the idea of commercial interests. And the reason for that is because when you get the commercial tax base, as Mr. Stoke has made a good point when he was presenting his innovation hub, that's not protected under the Save Our Homes Act. Those increases can be significant and permanent, and they can defer the costs for the tax base, for the residential tax base. So the commercial interest where it's available should be looked at as an ROI, a return on investment. Another thing that's very important is metrics. And so one of the metrics that corporations may use, like how much money are you going to spend on marketing, how much money, what's your cost of sales, et cetera? But a very, very important metric, and one you can look at across all the industries, is the percentage of your overhead as a percentage of your, of your business. And the CRA isn't a revenue stream like a Circle K would be or a car, a series of car washes. It gets a TIF fund, it's just, there's no effort involved. This gets hit with, in 2024, $5 million. Now, on the other side, you can be like a United Way, or you can be a nonprofit where you, you're spending the money on the other side, where you have a daily operation. Maybe you're a charity, maybe you're handing out meals on wheels. The point is, the overhead for the CRA is 14%. It should be 7%. $700,000 to manage capital investments is, there's no good way of looking at that. It's just too much money.
Thank you. Anyone else looking to make a general comment before we begin? Seeing none. All of the other cards that I have then will be budget-related. Thank you. Okay. Our next agenda item. 5:05, first fiscal year 2023-2024 public budget hearing, public hearing number six. It'll be presented by several of our staff members, but it'll be teed up by Ms. Jennifer Manning. Ms. Manning, you are recognized.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jennifer Manning, OMB Director. As you mentioned earlier, it's the first, there's two public hearings. This is the first public hearing. And it's a formal process where the board has to take action as required by Florida statutes. And the first important issue is to discuss, shall be the percent of increase in the millage over the rollback rate and the specific purposes for which ad valorem revenues are being increased. We are required to adopt a tentative budget. And the resolutions for each taxing authority, millage rates and each corresponding budget is included in this, in your package, as well as other county funds that do not have millages. There are resolutions based upon those budgets tentatively approved during the budget workshops. The rollback rate may be higher, therefore, the proposed millage may decrease in the millage over the rollback rate. And just to explain the rollback rate again, it's a rate that would generate prior year revenues, which is ad valorem revenues, less allowances for new construction and additions. So this slide represents the rollback rate for each taxing authority. And I won't read them all because we will be reading them when we do the resolutions at the end of this presentation. But I would just say, for example, the B.O.C.C., which is the county, countywide taxing authority, the rollback, the request, the tentative millage is 6.7615. The rollback rate is 5.9551, which represents a 13.54% increase. The fire rescue MSU, for example, is, the request is 2.7002. The rollback rate is 2.3895, which is a 13% increase. The next slide shows that we have two 10-mill caps. One is for the countywide taxing authority, and that is within the state statute, so we're making, we are, the 10 mills and we're requesting 6.7615%. And for the rest of the MSUs, which includes fire, parks, road storm order and the commission districts, as well as the special district, they have a cap of a 10-mill, and we are at 3.4662. This is just to recap post-workshop adjustments during the workshop on July 17th. We, the board discussed the budget. We came to a conclusion that we could reduce certain areas, $5.8 million, such as the sheriff operating budget, the parks capital improvement plan, parts of that. We reduced public CIP, public building CIP, the sheriff building CIP, as well as using fund balance to maximize our opportunities. So we switched out ad valorem with anticipated fund balance. So moving forward, we're looking at the ad valorem impact as of today. So countywide ad valorem impact is $28.4 million. And parks, fire, parks, storm order and district, other districts, MSUs, is $9.8 million. That's a total of $38.2 million increase. Of that, the CIP, which was tentatively approved in April, as well as in July, we made some reductions that I mentioned earlier. And so the impact of ad valorem is $6.8 million. We reduced the parks by 1.2 million, $1,250,000. Public building by 200,000, which was their FAB. We also did law enforcement, 620,000. And of course, we also replaced anticipated funds. So looking back on the purpose, the reason why we're increasing ad valorem, and this is just based on the countywide ad valorem related to the constitutional officers and judicial. So as you can see, the sheriff, originally, he started with 16.3 million, and he reduced 769,000. So his new ask is 15 millions, 15,600,000 roughly. Supervisor of election, 379, 379,000. Tax collector, 305,000. The clerk of the court, 290,000. Property appraiser, 153,000. We have inmate care contract, which increased 1.6 million. And mental health court, that was requested by judicial, which is 450,000. And then our E911 program, which is 419,000. That totals 19.2 of the impact. Then when we look at the countywide impact, which is just the board itself, we have technology increase for 1.2 million. We have the CRA, which is the county's portion, as well as the city's portion, which is 1.9 million. And the property insurance, which increased 765,000. And then we have the FRS impact, which is an unfunded mandate, which is 725,000. So that totals 4.6 million. And I just want to note that although the departments had increases, it did not impact the ad valorem, the new ad valorem that we generated. We use reoccurring funds from paying off debt service, as well as increase in revenue projections for park and rec fees, as well as charges for services and revenue sharing. This slide is, this is a new slide that we looked at, a five-year average, and this is just based on our adopted, and this is only countywide. It's based on our adopted millage for countywide. And I looked at the areas, the main areas that use countywide funds, and that was the sheriff. We have the other constitutional officers, like the supervisor of election, tax collector, property appraiser, and judicial. Then I also looked at the health and medical services, as well as the board section. So when you look at the five-year outlook, the average that the sheriff asked for all those adopted millages was 49%. And then the average for the other constitutional was 11%. And 5% for medical services, and the board itself represents 35%. And in seeing that, I allocated those percentages based on our increase. So for the countywide ad valorem, we generated 22.2 million roughly. And we, and then I used the percentage to say, 49% of 22 million would be 10 million, 10.1 million. Then I looked at the other constitutionals, 11% would generate, they would, they can ask up to 2.4 million. Medical services, 1.2 roughly. And then the county, the B.O.C.C. would be 7.7 million. So that would be, if we had to divvy up the money, the increase between those four areas, that's what it would be. The next column shows the ask, whatever the request for budget. So for the sheriff, he requested 15.6 million roughly. And those include having to pay for salaries, which was 8.3 million. His FRS impact was 2.3 million. His health insurance was 1 million. And then he had new positions that represented 1.4 million. As far as the other constitutional officers are concerned, it, which includes medical, the health, the mental health court, which was 450,000 plus E911, and then the other constitutional officers, they could have asked up to 2.4 million. Their requests, you know, ended up being roughly 2 million. And as you look at the health and medical services area, they could ask for 1 point, roughly 2 million, and they asked 1.6 million. And that's for inmate medical. When we look at the county, the B.O.C.C., and we have to bear in mind, we already reduced 5.8 million of the budget. So when you look at that, the capital, we're asking for 9.2 million roughly. The capital improvement represents 4.6 million. The county and city CRA is 1.9 million. The technology represents 1.1. And the property insurance, 765, 765,000. And FRS impact, 725,000. Then we move on to the next slide, and this is, just has to do with the MSU request, the reason for their request. And then you have fire rescue, their contract, as well as their FTE. We added several FTEs to their, their fleet, I shouldn't say fleet, but to their human resources. And so it's 4.4 million. And they have a FRS impact, which is 2 million, similar to the sheriff. It's unfund, I mean, it's those unfunded mandates that we have no control over. And then the CRA related to the fire rescue portion is 403,000. The other MSUs had cost of doing business, like fuel, supplies and equipment, of 182,000. And then you have the urban canopy tree audit, which is 80,000. You have the street light and other, you know, contracted maintenance of 236,000. And then the mowing and landscaping, that's based on the contract costs or additional mowing and landscaping added to the work, and that's 272,000. So that represents 70, 7 million, 7.6 million. So overall, those items represent the 32 million that we asked for, the 38 million. So when we look at the overall, the millage for the board countywide, last year, it was, for FY '23, it was 6.5559. We're requesting 6.7615. That represents 3.136% increase. The MSU was 3.4078. And we're requesting 3.4662, which is 1.712% increase. So the total millage overall for countywide, that does not include the commission districts or the special district A, is a 2.649% increase. And in summary, when you look at the taxable values, for FY '23, it was 28.1 billion. And FY '24 is 31.2 billion, 0.7 billion. And then ad valorem request is 244.9 million. And for FY '24, 283.1 million. The total budget for FY '23 was 558.5, 559 million. And the request for FY '24 is 600 and roughly 40 million, if you will. And the positions in FY '23 for the board, all the board positions was 1,100. For FY '23, it's 11.37. And most of those positions are fee-based. There's only, there was very few ad valorem impact on those. The constitutional officers had 752, and they're requesting 768. The total millage rate again for FY '23 is 9.9637. And FY '24 is 10.2277. And this chart just shows that we're, we're below the millage rate in the countywide based on 21. 21 was higher than the current millage rate at this point. And of course, in '23, we reduced our millage because we only asked for what we really need to provide the services for our constituents. So looking again, the total countywide millage excluding the commission district is increase of 2.649%. With that, the tentative budget hearing, the resolutions for the tentative budget has to be read in full, does not have to be read in full, but you must state the taxing authority, the rollback rate, the percent of increase or decrease over the rollback rate, and the millage to be levied. This slide just gives you the timeline of when we need to finish our trim notices and get our millage adopted. And with that, I will entertain any questions.
Ms. Manning, thank you very much. Do we have a question?
Ms. Manning, why, you might have explained this before. Streetlights, how does that compare to the 236,000 increase in streetlight maintenance? How does that compare to last year? It seems like, that seems like a big increase. Was there something specific?
Stephanie Merly, Budget Financial Manager. I think a lot of it had to do with the 12% increase in the FPL rates, as well as new fixtures such as Palm City Place. Jim Gordon and George Zama might be able to explain a little bit more regarding that, but I know a large portion of that was the FPL rate increase of 12%.
I see them coming in now.
So that's just the maintenance? So those are county, only county streetlights? So does DOT maintain their own streetlights on DOT roads?
Yes, because we do get a reimbursement, because even though we might run out first, we get a reimbursement.
Commissioner, it depends. If the streetlights were installed at the request of the county, as a road enhancement project on US1 and others, the county maintains them or pays the electricity to maintain them. So a large portion of the streetlights, we actually do maintain even on the DOT roadways.
Mr. Gordon, the question was the increase in street lamps.
And how it compares to last year and why it seems so, so high?
So there's a couple of factors working there. The, number one is electricity has gone up and that they're big consumers of electricity. But the other thing is the volume of streetlights. So we picked up a lot of the US1 streetlights. So we, we're maintaining far more streetlights than we have in the past. We're absorbing it with the staff we have, but we have to pay for the parts and materials and the repairs to, to all those streetlights.
But we're maintaining, we're maintaining them instead of DOT because we request them be installed? Is that where?
Correct. And we also have agreements with DOT to maintain, pretty much if there's a light in Martin County that isn't an FPL light, we're maintaining it now, going forward this year, going forward. In the past, DOT had maintenance contractors, Martin County had maintenance contractors, and FPL did. So from this year forward, Martin County's maintaining the streetlights other than the ones that are FPL-centric, the, you know, the standard FPL lights, the Cobra Heads that are on the FPL poles.
But we have a contract with DOT that they're paying us on a per, per light. And also, the signalized intersections, they're also paying their portion of the cost for maintenance for us to maintain them. So we're maintaining them with our staff as opposed to them maintaining them with a contractor.
I didn't remember discussing that before, and it seems high, so, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay. I do see in the back of the room, we had requested the largest portion of the potential increase, the requested increase, is for the sheriff's office. And the sheriff has been here a couple of times to make a presentation to us on where and how those numbers add up with his people. So I see he's back there. I think before we jump into public comment, we would allow the sheriff an opportunity to present the numbers as they are. So we all have a better understanding of where they are. Sir, welcome. We appreciate you coming back to see us. I know you have your team with you, your financial team. Good. Ms. Manning, just to bring you up to speed, sir, Ms. Manning has gone through the proposed budget as it stands to explain the different sections and the potential requests, the, the revenue that you had already offered up from where we were at our initial budget hearing, our workshop, excuse me, to today. So we just wanted to give you an opportunity with Mr. Youngblood to present what your challenges are and why the numbers are where they are.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Commissioners. It's always a pleasure to be here. I say this every time, and I think it's important to say it again, you have a tremendously difficult job. You are appropriators. You have a sacred trust with the community to be thoughtful with every tax dollar. And I stand before you, and it's a very humbling experience to ask for this kind of money. I didn't do it lightly. And our process is this, and I want to be faithful to your time and to the, to the audience's time. Everybody has, they want to say something. And so I'll be as brief as I can and then be completely available for questions. Our budget process started months ago. We sat down and Kevin, our CFO, our chief, chief operating officer, financial officer, hands out a budget packet to all the division commanders. And their directive is to make a request beginning with this year. We don't go back. We do, we literally do a zero-based budget. We start off from scratch. We don't just take last year's numbers and add to it. So he gives out the packets, and then every commander gets with their lieutenants, they get with their sergeants, and they begin to put together a comprehensive budget. Their initial, their initial request, and we looked at every request, and nobody was asking for anything that was outlandish or that wouldn't further public safety. And that first request came in at 110 million they asked for. We want to work on those numbers. Obviously, we didn't, weren't going to come in with that kind of a number. And we looked at every single budget sheet, and we said, do we have to have this to maintain our razor-like edge that we currently have within the community and with our law enforcement efforts? And we got down to 101, 101,604,000. Since then, we've reduced it at your request. We backed off on some of the hiring and took another 769 million off. And I think I did the numbers a little backwards, but it was initially, when we came to you, that was 700, it was 769,000 more than it is now. I think the, the primary question that should be foremost on everybody's mind, in your minds especially, is do we need this much to fulfill our task? Well, the answer is yes and no. It just depends what you want from law enforcement in your community. Today, using technology that we don't talk about openly, but you all have had privilege to see, using that technology, we got onto a car with people, with criminals from Palm Beach County. Saturday of this past week, they came into our county. They followed someone home from a bank, broke into their car, and stole X amount of money that they had just taken out of a bank. They had the audacity to come back to our county today, at which time we picked them back up again. Now, that's a needle in a haystack. That kind of ability does not happen on the cheap. That was a very expensive operation. We picked them up, we put probably a dozen detectives into surveillance mode, we got a helicopter airborne, we worked with our partner, partner community, our partner law enforcement agencies to the north of us. And right now, they're in my jail. And we got $7,000 back for the victim who had had her money stolen. They hit again today. So the question is, could we have gotten through today and answered basic 911 calls and worked a traffic crash, gone to a school and found a child who got on the wrong bus? Could we have put, put our, a couple of our motors on the road and slowed traffic down? The answer is yes. But without the kind of funding that we have in this budget, I would not have had the personnel who had the stick-to-it-ness and professionalism to monitor a complex case like this, I probably wouldn't have had the aviation fuel to do what we did, a long-term aerial surveillance, so that my ground units didn't get burned or observed by the, by the suspects. And so the money that you see here represented, that the people behind me have to decide through their support or not support of this budget, is, is that what you want in Martin County? Do you want a sophisticated, progressive, aggressive law enforcement effort? Or do you just want us to answer calls for service and go home? Or do you just want us to answer calls for service and go home? Write reports? You could go all over. I think, I think Commissioner Hetherton, you, you had your car broken into. It's public records, so I'm not revealing.
Oh, in Orange County, and they wrote a report?
They wrote a report, said, ma'am, have a nice day. God bless you. Don't come back here if you don't want to get your car broken into. In Martin County, we would have turned over every leaf, not because the name's Hetherton, we would have done, we would have even done it for Commissioner Campi.
I don't have a car.
But we probably, or have caught them because of our, our abilities. Our clearance rates are high. They're much higher than, than, than the average. The other thing that we have, there's, there's a, unlike a salesperson who at the end of the year gets graded on how many widgets they sold or she sold, a lot of what we do is so intangible. What is public safety worth? I mean, I can't answer that question for you. You're the policymakers and the appropriators, but what is our reputation worth? If I had $100 for every person who's come up to me and said, we moved to Martin County because it's a safe community, they don't come up to me and say, we love your county because you have great storm drainage. And I appreciate that, we do. They don't come up to me and say, we moved to your county because of the beach. Over, and of course, I'm a cop, so I draw that comment. I get that, I'll make note of that. All the time, I can be buying Macintosh apples and Publix and have someone come up to me and say, Sheriff, we moved here because of this county, because of the safety of this county. And, and, and I'm going to bring it for landing here in a second. I've had people point their finger at me and say, I moved here because of the way you do business. We don't want to be California. We don't want to be the county that your car was broken into. We want to be Martin County, where if your car gets broken into, your bicycle gets stolen, you have a hit and run. So many of these crimes are, are things that in other counties are just white noise. They are just white noise. Nobody is going to investigate that. If you have a hit and run in most counties, unless it's served up on a platter, the car wrecks down the block, they're not going to get them. Now, I know it sounds like I'm bragging, but I go all over the state. I'm part of the Florida Sheriff's Association. I know how other counties can be. We are outliers in the way we treat property crimes. As a result, we have almost no crimes against persons. Nobody in this room is going to go home today and have somebody jump out on their front yard and rip their purse off their arm or knock them down and take their wallet. There's just not going to happen because we have a reputation. Because when people get off at this exit and get caught, they tell their friends, don't go there. They're crazy in Martin County. They'll put you in jail and they'll keep you there, and then you're going to go to prison. So I'll kind of close where I started. It's, it's not an academic question. It's not a rhetorical question. It's, it's a truly substantive question. What kind of public safety do you want? Since the word got out that we may be getting this raise, today we had six people come into the sheriff's office with already certified from other law enforcement agencies that want to work for us. We, we have a problem hiring. This money, this raise for our deputies, which is a substantial part of the increase, 85% of the budget, is personnel services. It's, it's paying for their, their salaries, their overtime, their health benefits. The word is getting out, we're going to be able to fill our vacancies. We do have to compete with Palm Beach County. I know we all hate to hear that. I, I wish I didn't have to say it. The answer could be, well, go work in Palm Beach County. Well, that's exactly what they're doing. They're, they're driving through this county to go to Palm Beach County and work. This raise that's in here will stop that, will help us retain good people, and we have to be competitive. We have, I, I love firefighters. We have to be competitive with our brother firefighters. They got a 12% raise. It would be unthinkable for me to tell my people, well, you're not worth as much as a firefighter. And I'm not comparing who's more valuable. But until you've stopped a car at 3:00 in the morning with tinted windows and don't know how many people are in the car, let alone who's driving, and the hackles on your neck are going up, until you've walked up on that car, it's hard to picture what these deputies are doing. By God's grace, we've, we've never lost one in the line of duty. So that's, that's my thought. And I'll close with this, just a couple of numbers. Part of my budget increase, 2.2 million dollars, is, is the FRS increase. No matter what you tell me, I've got to pay that. That's like, you can't shave that off. Our health insurance went up 712 million, and we have 17 new positions. We have not added a road patrol zone in almost 20 years. 20 years? That's a long time, and certainly not since I've been sheriff. We have not added, back in '06, '08, when the economy crumbled, we had a hiring freeze, and we've never recovered from that. When the state mandated that I have SROs in every school, I have not recovered from that yet. Do you realize that within the Martin County Sheriff's Office, I run a 31-person police department for the school board? That's bigger than the average city police department in the state of Florida. We have never fully recovered from having to lose those positions. This will move us in the right direction. These positions that we've asked for will, will staff new zones and give us the ability to keep functioning at the level we're functioning. So that's kind of an overview. I feel the heat behind me. I've done what you do. I've sat in Tallahassee as an appropriator and had to pass, had to pass funding bills. This is not a fun job that you have. But I will ask this on your behalf to the people that are sitting behind me. Think about, and I've got my back to you, but I have to because of the mic, I'm sorry. But this is for us back here. This is for me, I pay taxes, I live here. Think about the feeling you get when you go out to your car after shopping at the mall, and we're holding on to that mall. We're fighting to keep our mall from going like other malls. We pour resources in there. Think about how you feel when you go to your mall, your car, it's not broken into you. Think about how you feel when you go home at the end of the day in your car, your home is not broken into you. That's what we have. That's what we offer. That's what we do. And I wish it wasn't so expensive, but we have an expensive industry. There's, there's no other way to do it but to use taxpayer dollars and, and however you vote, whatever you do, whatever's said after I sit down, I appreciate what you do up here. And I wouldn't want your job. So I'll, I'll stop there if you have a question.
Sir, you didn't mention you have another large responsibility, and I'm not sure if every, this room is a little more tuned in to what happens in the community, but can you speak about your responsibility for the jail?
Yes, we have a, we manage for the people of Martin County, I'm the chief corrections officer, we manage a 700-bed jail, seven days a week, 365 days a year. We have an average jail population, sometimes up around 500 people. We are responsible, you, by, when I say we, we are all responsible for their healthcare, for their teeth, for the babies they have, for the addictions they withdraw from, from the 30-something percent of them that are on psychotropic drugs. We, we, it's just, it's a big, it's a big lift. In addition to that, of course, I mentioned the school resource officers. We have three helicopters, 700 and something square miles of land. I have six marine patrol boats that work day and night to keep our waterways safe. We have a, a full standalone forensic investigative unit. We don't lean on FDLE to do our work, so we can get right to it. We are a full standalone sheriff's office and operate 100%. We have, we have an FBI nationally accredited SWAT team. God forbid if we needed it, we, we can call them out. You have been very gracious with your funding. Very, I am a fully funded law enforcement agency.
I appreciate that. Mental health has become, you were here earlier today, discussed mental health. Can you explain a little bit, while we have the audience, can you explain a little bit of what you're up against with mental health and then how does that affect your budget?
People ask me all the time, what is the number one challenge I have? And they expect me to say car burglaries or, you know, internet crime. The number one challenge we have today is mental health and the spinoffs. That would be, so drug dependency, underemployment or unemployment, mental health constantly around the clock. We are responding to calls for service for people that are deeply mentally disturbed. We have talked about more services with some kind of mental health pod. You know, that, that remains to be seen down the road, but because of the level of mental health issues, because of the crises we see in our homes, we go from one domestic, that's our, that's our number one call, mental health, domestic violence, child abuse, child neglect. Society is more frail today than it's ever been. And that's, that is not hyperbole, it's not a political statement. It just is. And there's nobody else. There's nobody else. 24 hours a day, if you have a problem, you don't know what to do, you call 911, one of my deputies will show up and do their very best to right the situation. But that, that challenge of mental health is only getting worse.
Thank you. Questions from some of my colleagues for the sheriff? Sir, let me ask you a final question then. You made your budget proposal. You're coming in at about 101 million dollars. It's a 16 million dollar increase over last year. We are very fortunate to have the opportunity to sit down with you and your team and hear specifically in a much more detail than you gave today. So the biggest chunk, if, if we're going to do what I'm assuming everyone here is looking for, is a budget neutral, there's no way to do that without a substance. And I'm not saying I will necessarily go that route, but so everyone can hear. Out of this 16 million dollar increase, I know you've fine-tuned it several times. What portion of that do you think you could potentially give up and, and not necessarily impact what you just told us?
Well, we would have to eliminate the positions we've asked for. We, I, I mean, I don't do the math in my head nearly as good as him. I'm much better at burglaries and robberies, he does adding and subtracting.
That's what we want you to do.
But I believe that with any substantial cut, much past personnel, we'd have to go into the raises. And I, I, yeah.
Okay.
I'm hoping you don't ask me to do that.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I think, first of all, Sheriff, thank you for being here and explaining that side of the story. I, I think, first to Ed's numbers, I think in fairness, and I, I have this conversation every time we have a budget conversation, we had 22 million roughly in new revenue this year, right? Of that, if, if we are roughly 50/50 of the budget, you're 50% of the, of the, not the budget, of the ad valorem side of the budget, you would have had roughly 11, we would have had 11 million somewhere, give or take, in very average numbers. So in fairness, the, the increase above that new revenue would have been really 5 million. It would not have been 16 million. I mean, the number is 16 million, but it's not like it's a 16 million on top of what revenue we saw coming in this year. I, just in fairness. And I think, I think it should go, I mean, I think your question of, of us and our community is, is one that's spot on. There's never a person I talk to relative to our budget, relative to anything, that goes without saying that we live in a ridiculously safe place. And, and there's a reason for that. And the reason is, as you just laid out for us, I think, very eloquently in terms of how you do what you do. And I, and I think the question for all of us, and, and Ed's question, you know, what would you cut back on if you had to cut back on? I think that also comes down to, are we as a community willing to give up something that is what everybody covets to live here? And, and I do. I, I say it to people all the time. We live in, we have to live in one of the safest counties in the state of Florida, bar not. Am I willing to trade that title? Am I willing to trade or risk that? No. And I have said to you, I've said to your predecessor, every year I have sat here, the sheriff is a constitutionally elected officer. He or she, in our case it's he, has the right to go to the legislature, to the governor and cabinet, if we were to say, no, it's too much, we're not accepting that. I can't imagine this board, and I cannot imagine our community saying, we are going to go at odds over what the sheriff is requesting. I, I just, I, I can't see that. Because at some point in time, you would say what you just said, something is going to have to give. And I don't know how we explain that to the community if the community is the recipient of what has to give. In other, in other words, something bends. Having the mall in my district, the, the two areas that for decades have been at least concerns for our northern part of the county have been the mall and the beach. And I think through your efforts personally, I say personally, through your leadership as sheriff, those have significantly changed in your tenure. Our beach is a much safer place than it's ever been. And for those of you who don't go to the beach, those of you who don't access our beach, it was problematic years ago. There were periods of the, of the time of year where break-ins were a regular occurrence. We have, both our staff and the sheriff's staff, the sheriff's commitment to us as a board, as us to a district, have stepped up that to a level to where it's really hard to do something in our public beaches and get away with it. We have licensed readers in every one of our beach access points, not everyone, but our two big, large public access points. And I believe that the first week we had them installed, we had a murder out there that occurred. And as a result of having those cameras in place, that person was apprehended, and that probably wouldn't have happened. We might not have ever known who that was. So as I look at our budget and I look at where the increases are, and I look at the importance of where we place our values as a community on that budget, between fire rescue and between our sheriff's department, they have got to be, in terms of public safety as a whole, have got to be our primary concern. I, I would never second guess the sheriff's decision and, and opinion in his business. As you said, you're the, you're the robbery and the other guy, and you're the finance guy, Kevin, and, and probably vice versa, wouldn't want to happen. But we are incredibly fortunate to have you. Your leadership, your team, you have, you have really revolutionized the sheriff's department in Martin County. And it's, and it's, the sheriff is incredibly, I think, even with what he said, he is still incredibly modest in what he has said and what he does over there, or what they all do, what the staff does over there. There are things that, that we do in this county that other counties don't do that make this a much safer place. And there, and, and as he said, there is a cost to that. And so I will never second guess that. I, I just, I, it, the performance and the, and the ability to live in a place that we live is second to none. And, and whether I made a choice to live here for that purpose or not, I don't think I actually did because I didn't know you back then. But I wouldn't want to live in any other community as a result. So thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, anything else? Sheriff, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman.
We'll take it from here.
God bless them.
Mr. Donaldson, the sheriff in his presentation spoke of the increase that a majority of the board also offered to our fire rescue personnel. Our chief was not in, is out of town and was not able to come and give that same presentation that was given to us, but in his absence, you are able to. I will just tee it off by saying, if you didn't hear what I was saying as the sheriff was departing, he mentioned that he was looking for parity within his personnel with the increase that the firefighters received, the firefighter union. And we, every three years, and Mr. Donaldson, you'll correct me if I'm wrong, every three years or so, we negotiate our contract with the firefighters' union. The sheriff negotiates with his team the PBA contract and then gives it to us complete. The firefighter contract, that union contract, is negotiated by our staff at the leadership of Mr. Donaldson and Ms. Woods, our county attorney. And then it comes to the five of us. And when they originally came, they said they were looking for a 12% increase. Now, that number is a shocking number when you hear it. I was shocked when I heard it. It is not a number that we had ever really given as an increase. Normally, they're 1%, 2%, 3% over three years, and that's how it worked. I've never received a 12% increase in my salary. I'm sure many of you have not either. However, having heard that, and now today, and I appreciate so much you all coming here, I look out and see a majority of the faces. I know I'm friendly with most of you. So I appreciate, most of the time when we do the budget, there's not a single person here. So this will be an exercise for all of us. That negotiation was then sort of brought forward to discuss the issue that if you're a business owner, you've been hearing, is recruitment and retention. And we were suffering in both categories. And we were suffering in both categories. Now, in certain areas, if you lost someone, and I always use Parks and Rec as an example, no disrespect to Parks and Rec employees, could be any of our other employees, if you lose someone in one of our other areas, for the most part, it's not a catastrophic, it's not a punch to the budget. But we are spending, and I'm not an expert on this, but I've had the opportunity, as my colleagues have, to hear from our fire rescue personnel on this. There are two things that are happening. And again, to the sheriff's point about Palm Beach County, and a lot of people say to me, don't compare us with Palm Beach County, it's a separate situation. However, they are immediately to our south, and if you're in a fire rescue, you work a 24-hour shift. We have folks, a lot of you I see are from Palm City, we have neighbors that work as fire rescue in Miami-Dade, or Broward, or Orlando, because it's not like the rest of us where you have to commute back and forth to your home every night. You're staying there. So the area in which you can work is much larger because you're going to sleep overnight there. But all that being said, our biggest competition is directly south of us in Palm Beach County. Now, some of you are either fire rescue, retired fire rescue, or no fire rescue, neighbors or friends. They're looking for over 350 people in Palm Beach County. Our entire department is 350 people. So they're offering, and this is not my words, this is the chief said, they call it dropping your gear. So if you were a brand-new potential recruit, a hire at the fire rescue department, you can, and I'm ballparking the numbers, Palm Beach County is offering approximately to a $20,000 increase from what we are offering here, correct, Mr. Donaldson?
That's correct.
So if you had a son or daughter, or a future son-in-law or daughter-in-law, and they were looking to go into fire rescue, and they say, hey, should I work here in Martin County, or should I work in Palm Beach County? You're going to make $20,000 more going down to Palm Beach County. If you were, and then the training, so that's just new, so that's the recruitment side of it. The chief also explained that normally, when we open up positions, because if you do it purely on retirement, or people leaving to move somewhere else, it's one or two here and there. But every once in a while, we'll add a chunk of extra positions. And he said that normally, if we were filling 20 positions, 400 or 500 people would apply, correct?
That's correct.
Lately, they've been getting 100, 125 people, because they're probably interviewing and applying elsewhere. Out of the 120 that they get, some of them are not physically capable of working here. They're not, you know, academically capable of working here. The other thing to remember, I grew up up north in a volunteer fire department community, where you had firefighters. We don't have that in Martin County. Every one of our personnel is either an EMT or a paramedic, because the majority of our calls are medical. We don't have high-rise buildings. We, actually, we have had fire, actual fire calls, been increasing quite a bit lately. But a majority of our calls are medical calls. So you'd want to have an EMT at the, that's our bare bones medical issue, or paramedic. So, and we're trying to hire paramedics. Out of the 120 that apply, 50 get excluded, we're down to 70, and then they're going to do the interviews. And when they did the interviews, I think he said 40 or 50 showed up for the interviews, even though they had a scheduled interview, 20 or 30 just didn't show. So now we're trying to fill 20 positions from 50 positions, from 50 applicants. Now, I'm not a fire rescue expert, I'm assuming most of you are not either, but that's not really where you're going to cull the best and the brightest. Because God forbid, you or a loved one have a medical emergency, you don't want someone that was just okay. So our criteria is very high. So they come and they say, we need a 12% increase, which will take that $20,000 difference and bring it down to about a $7,000 difference. You still could make $7,000 more going to Palm Beach County. We're hoping that brand-new fire stations, which we've worked very hard to build, a training facility, properly staffing the departments with the proper personnel, because remember, the calls are the calls. They've had a huge increase in the percentage of calls over the last several years. A lot of it has to do with the huge increase in assisted living facilities that we have. They also respond to every call for the full length of 95 in the turnpike from the southern border to the northern border. Some counties don't have that. So that's the information that I am fortunate enough, my colleagues are fortunate enough to sit down and hear. So when they came and said, this is what we're looking for, because if we don't have the number of personnel, they had started into mandatory overtime. You work your shift, it's 8:00 in the morning on a Tuesday, you're supposed to go home, your captain, your battalion chief will say, ugh, we're a little short on the staffing, on the minimum staffing, you can't go home. We need you to stay. Now, if you're young and you're trying to start a family, that's all overtime. And a lot of you know what that means. A lot of you have followed our firefighter budget. Overtime is millions and millions of dollars. So you're either going to pay it in personnel upfront, or you're going to pay it in overtime. And we've been trying to balance that out for years. All of a sudden, you can have, you know, and good for them, because they work the time, you can have individuals making well over $100,000 a year, because they're pumping in maybe $50,000 a year in overtime, because there's plenty of overtime to be had. So when we talk about that 12%, that's where I was coming from. I assume that my colleagues that voted for it as well, because just like the sheriff, those are things that all of us, I'm assuming you here and us, and everyone that I know, are not willing to sacrifice. We can't sacrifice fire rescue, and we can't sacrifice police protection. Those are, I always say that the first dollar that you're going to pay in taxes, you want it to be that. So when you hear that 12% number, and then you know that the sheriff is going to be looking for that with his personnel as well, that's where we are. I don't need you to explain it any further than that, I don't think. Unless I missed something?
No, I think it's important to note that this last year, we did have a lot of increase in call loads. Our overtime had gone over $3 million. We did add roughly 20 positions in. In the middle of the year, our overtime budget is now reduced. Now, they're just coming onboard under $500,000, so, and it's dropping because we're able to fill those positions. So it is, it is significant. The, you know, we are also losing firefighters in like year three, or before they get to their fifth year, because they are getting recruited by our counties to the south. And that's just the nature of the beast, is that we've been losing them, and I believe with your contract, we've stopped that, at least for now. It is a challenge for all of us dealing with the public safety, you know, wages, but it's also, if you don't have them, they're a critical part of our workforce. And we're hopefully that this inflation is going to level off, and we won't have to deal with this for some time again. But this year has been particularly rough on that portion.
Okay. As the chair, the final question I'll ask, and I hope you understand, this is for your edification and information. If we were to reach the goal that I'm assuming everyone here is talking about, budget neutral, Mr. Donaldson, what is the dollar amounts? Now, we're not going to say specifically where the dollars are coming from yet, but let us all know what the goal is. To eliminate the 2.64% increase, is it 2.64? To eliminate the 2.64% increase and bring us to budget neutral, what will we need to shave off the budget as it's presented today?
$7,950,000.
Okay. Two or three weeks ago, or several meetings ago, when we were having our workshop, the number was four, what was the budget?
The increase?
Was going to...
4.2.
4.2. So we went from 4.2 to 2.6. What did we shave off then to get to that?
5.8.
So we shaved nearly 6 million, and we'll need another approximate eight.
Yes.
The biggest portion of that increase is the sheriff and fire rescue. You heard me ask the sheriff. I didn't want to, but I know you're here for a reason. What will you cut, Sheriff? You heard what he said. He's 85%, his budget's personnel. See, he was just starting to recruit. He has, he has overtime issues as well. So even if he's not volunteering to come back and say, here's another 2 or 3 million, we would have to find 8 million from the rest of our budget. If we left the sheriff and fire rescue whole, the only other way to shave out 8 million is to what? I know that if we're going to roll our sleeves up, and a couple of years ago, when we were trying to reach a million here and a million there, we gave it back that night. This is the first of two hearings. Two weeks from now, we have another one. There's two options, well, three, because you're going to give us your suggestions. The third, the first option is your suggestions. The second option is our suggestions. The third option is, we leave it to our administrator and staff to say, two weeks from now, come back and show us what an $8 million reduction looks like. Now, I don't want to sound like the doom and gloom guy, but there will be, because Mr. Donaldson and I had this meeting earlier, I asked him that question on your behalf. I'm a Republican like most of you. I would love that you were at home watching television tonight. I would love that this was a neutral budget, that we weren't going to get into it. But we can, and if this is the will, then we will. I have no problem. Left to my own devices, I'll cut $25 million, but it would be the things that I don't think we need, and other people would lose their minds over. So that, all of you could do the same thing, if it was just taken out the red pen, but then there's other people that would come and say, how dare you? Because there's a constituency nearly for every dollar. So with that, any other questions or comments for my colleagues? Let's jump right into it. This is how the system works. Some of you are here for the first time. You're going to come to the podium, you'll state your name for the record. There's a little box up there that'll say three minutes. You're given three minutes. Sometimes other municipalities, when the room is full, they narrow it down to one minute. We're not going to do that. Three minutes. At the 2 minute and 45 second point, you're going to hear a tone. That doesn't mean you need to stop. It just means that you have 15 seconds to sort of finalize your thoughts. If you want to get up and say, I don't want any increase, and sit back down, we're perfectly okay with that as well, because I have about 30 request-to-speak forms. I see a staff, old light, thank you, with, and then what I'll do, since there's two empty, or a couple of empty chairs in the front row, what normally speeds the process up is I'll call two names at a time. If you are the second name that I call like the on-deck, please come forward and sit in one of these seats. That really speeds the process along. Our first request-to-speak form is Richard McCauley, followed by Bonnie Philat? 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 I don't know how that L works with the rest of it. Sir, good evening and welcome.
Hi, Mr. McCauley, Hope, South Florida. After listening to the sheriff, I could really come up with some ideas where you could trim some things. But the idea that you guys will decide some big list of charities that you're going to give my money to is repugnant to me. And especially in light of what the sheriff just said, or what you just said, you really ought to find some better ways, for example, require every, I think you did that, but require every department to come up with a specific amount, 1%, 2%, or 3%, and hold them to it. And thanks a lot for hearing me, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, I apologize if you could state your name for the record.
I'm guessing I'm the only Bonnie in the room.
You live on Palmetto?
Yes, Bonnie Flint.
Flint? That's an N? It looks like an A, I apologize.
Sorry, handwriting.
Frank Titidakis, you are next, sir.
Okay.
Frank is still here? Oh, there he is. Hi, Frank, you're next. Ma'am, welcome.
Thank you. And thank you for giving me just a moment. I won't take my full three minutes. I am concerned the direction things are going. I think we've got to play ball with the rest of the country. Cutbacks need to happen, need to come from somewhere, and it probably needs to be shared across the board. How we can raise taxes to this amount with insurance rates going cuckoo, and with inflation still not under control, I think we really need to take more of a lead. One thing that occurred to me as I was sitting there, hearing about ambulance services and the fire rescue. Years ago, I'm from a suburb in Connecticut, a wealthy suburb, that runs their, a volunteer ambulance service staffed by EMT kids out of high school who have gained national attention. Maybe it's something we need to start here as an add-on, not to take over the whole county, but as an add-on. Anyway, I, please be creative, and I think we all need to tighten our belts. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Frank, you are next, followed by Jerry Jackson.
Thank you for the opportunity to address you. I'm here today representing the Martin County Taxpayers Association, and also myself as a taxpayer. Instead of confronting and prioritizing what the needs of the county are, the county commission has often given in to whichever squeaky wheel is turning at any particular moment during a commission meeting. If a group is unorganized and demands a park or a baseball field upgrade, then the commission has and will throw established plans overboard to appease those wearing the appropriate T-shirt. When challenged, the commission always presents a good reason to go along with the crowd, even though it may not be in the taxpayer's best interest. The recent compensation increase with public utilities, and I'm certainly sympathetic with the sheriff, we live in a very safe county, but it's unsustainable. So we need to take a look at new paradigms. Is there other ways that we can deliver these services without 16% increases across the board over a period of time? Recent commission actions underline how wrong the direction is that we're taking. The promise to pay millions to a developer and not to develop a lawfully entitled project is eye-opening. We do not adequately maintain our parks, yet we appease a few. The commission wants to stop a Palm City project that will pay millions to, new revenue to the county, and create one more park in addition to the 72 that we already have. The state of Florida has provided millions in grants for conversion for septic to sewer, and the Board of County Commissioner decided time ago that each neighborhood would pay its own way in the conversion process. However, two recent neighborhood conversions paid almost $2,000 more than what it would cost for the new, that would have been in a Porcellana or New Morovia conversion. Yet despite this difference, the commission scrapped the project because the homeowners there complained about the cost. Martin County is one of the highest taxed counties in the state. Much of that's the result of trying to deliver a level of service that does not fit with the county of our size and population. Maybe we need to rethink our service levels. The present trajectory that we're on is unsustainable because of the past spending decisions. And when you stop and think about it, taxpayers are facing double-digit increases in insurance, electric, gas, and food. And as a result of that, at some point, you know, we need to rethink what we're doing. Our economy is going to be in a recession, tax revenues will fall, and if we can't pay our bills now without a huge tax increase, what happens when the valuations and the revenues fall? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sir, one second. Our next request-to-speak form is Michael Circus.
Hi, I'm Jerry Jackson. Property owner in Martin County since 1990, so quite a while. Taxed enough already, is what I would say. And, you know, I'm encouraged to hear Commissioner Campi say that you're looking for a neutral budget. That's super encouraging. All I can tell you is that everybody is experiencing increases across the board. She mentioned it, food, electric, insurance. It keeps going. I could go on and on, but taxes is one place where you can control, where you can actually hold back, and that's what I would ask. Because I'll tell you, it's getting to the point where every time you turn around, it's getting more expensive just to exist. Forget about luxuries and extras, it's just plain existence. And Martin County is becoming very expensive. And so if you can do anything to lower this, or at least keep neutral budget, the residents of Martin County would be very, very thankful. I will applaud Commissioner, I'm sorry, Sheriff Snyder for his presentation, but his budget increases is too much. And I understand the level of service that he offers is second to none, and Martin County is a very safe place because of it, but... County is a very safe place because of it, but we have got to find a way to bring that budget down because it's just too high. And I appreciate the job he does and his deputies, and there's no question about it. It's fantastic. The other thing I would mention, and I don't know if this is changing or not, but fire rescue happens, at least as far as I can tell, having a pumper truck chase the ambulance to about every dang call, and it seems to me like a huge expense that's completely unnecessary. If there's ways to cut the, the fire rescues' actual expenditures, I think they need to find a way to do it. As far as people going to other counties, I'm telling you right now, Martin County is the place where firefighters and sheriffs want to work, and they just need to hold still because the people will come. They'll get the applicants, they'll fill the positions. The retirement is second to none. Apparently, the FRS, the Florida Retirement System, is mandatory by the state of Florida. I think that needs to be questioned by our governor, but, you know, it's like, the retirement for sheriffs, and it needs to be there because the sheriffs are putting their lives on the line, is fantastic, but the retirement to the firefighters is second to none either, and that's something I think that they should seriously look at. It sounds like it's unionized, hands-off, I don't know, one of those things. But any place where we can cut expenditures, I would also say, you know, is that my time?
You've got 15 more seconds.
Okay. Landscape. Any place where the county's putting in new trees and new landscape that's going to require vegetation and trimming and so forth, we just need to cut it back. I know we're talking about small things, but any place that we could cut expense in order to keep our neutral budget, I'm for it. Thank you.
Thank you. After Mr. Circus, it'll be Patrick McDonough.
Thank you, good evening. Mike Circus, Palm City. I know some of you guys can see this, I know you've all read this, it's the 2014 tentative budget, little over 650-some-odd pages. Each page is about a million dollars' worth of expenditures. I know it took me, as a layman, about 15 man-hours to go through it all. I actually ended up, about 14 pages of questions that I have about the expenditures in this budget. And I'm actually going to give you something that wasn't in this packet, and this actually comes off of what the sheriff said earlier today. His starting budget currently is $88 million, and 85% of that is in personnel. That is $74.8 million. For a 4% raise on $74.8 million, that is $2.992 million. So with a $16 million increase requested, some people might wonder why the, or where the other $12.6 million are going. I'll be honest, that's not my, my big concern today. My concern is why an idiot like me is the one asking the question. Inside your budget, there's a line item, there are 3.3 FTEs, and the line item is a 25% salary increase, but in the budget, it says no significant change. 25% is pretty significant change. Now, it's only $71,000 across 3.3 people. Let's call four, because I don't want to divide a person in half. But that's still quite a significant number, and to call that insignificant is quite concerning to me. This isn't the only one. Like I said, there's 14 pages in here, and I'd be glad to go through every single one if you'd like, but I think I've made the point. We need to be asking significant questions. We need to be asking substantive questions. Because for 10 years, I've been coming in front of this board. Not all of you have been here, and I don't place this all at your feet, because there's 160,000 residents that come in front of you every day begging for all kinds of expenditures, all kinds of new bells and whistles. And the 717 meeting made it very clear. We got Gucci belts being financed by the bank with Walmart pants. We can't afford this, and it's going to get worse. And I'll tell you, my family's been here for 60 years. I don't know if I'm going to keep my house. I built it with my own two hands, I have no idea if I'm going to keep it. Because every year, I'm trying to find new and creative ways to sell crap in my house so I can afford my property tax bill. I got horses I've been burying in that land for 15 years. Horses have been buried there for 40 years, horses I learned to ride on. And I probably won't be able to raise my kids on that land much longer, because all we do is spend, spend, spend. And at one point, we got to stop that expenditure. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McDonough, you are next, followed by Patty Marchese.
Excuse me, good afternoon. My name's Pat McDonough, I live in Hope Sound, the Eaglewood Development. I'm here this evening to address you commissioners and my fellow citizens on behalf of myself, but also the residents of my community. I'm president of the Eaglewood HOA, and they asked me, would I please attend the meeting and sort of express just the situation that people in my neighborhood feel they're experiencing. Most of the items were already mentioned. The property insurance, 52% is low as an increase. I see it every day on the neighbors' page, I don't know if any of you look at those pages or belong. Person after person is saying, I can't afford to own a home anymore. And we, someone else mentioned inflation. We all know about that, at the grocery store, at the, at the gas pumps, et cetera. Additionally, we have the, we have the problem of a looming recession, possibly, that everybody is talking about. And there's great apprehension, there's great worry. My point is, I understand the whole process you go through here, and I've read your online presentation, and it's very, very well done, I believe. It's very well thought out, and I understand the importance of all of the expenditures. I'm just saying, it's not the time. It's really not the time for this raise. And I'm here to petition you to find a way to not have that happen, because it's become a real catch-22. I hear, well, because of inflation, that's why it's $5, $6 for a dozen eggs. Okay. And then I find out, I go to a meeting like this, well, because things are going up, we have to tax you more. And if you just sit back and think about it, how can it happen? How can the average citizen keep up with it? And I, I don't think my community is doing well in that area. So I'm asking you to find a way. I'm not questioning the sheriff, I'm not questioning the fire department, I'm not questioning the departments in general of Martin County. What I'm saying is, it's not the time. So somehow, they have to get together, you have to get together with them and say, it's not the time. We got to find a better way. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir.
I thought you called my name.
What is your name?
McLendon.
I didn't, but you're, you're standing right there, let's save some time. And what's your first name, sir?
Bonnie McLendon.
Thank you, you're next.
I'm against, I'm against a tax increase. I'm born and raised in Florida, I moved up here from Palm Beach County. Palm Beach County is much more expensive than Martin County for houses, everything else. I am a licensed electrical and air conditioning contractor. I know the difference between expenses in Palm Beach County and here. We don't need an increase here, and I like to keep Little Mayberry, I call it. So I want to keep it that way.
Thank you, sir. After Patty is Mr. Richard Geisinger. Ms. Marchese, good evening.
Hello, my name is Patty Marchese, I'm a resident of Martin County, a homeowner and a taxpayer. First of all, I'm shocked that we have to be here. We elect Republicans to uphold our conservative values of less government, more freedom, and lower taxes. As you know, homeowners, everybody else said it before me, but I'm going to say it again. Homeowners' insurance in Florida is triple the national rate. Auto insurance, highest, always in the top three highest, and just recently this year is number one. Inflation is out of control, food, gas, interest rates are high, just not a time to raise taxes. And here are, these are figures taken from the Board of County Commission website. From 2017 to 2023, the Martin County population increased by 4.69%. In the same seven-year period, the Martin County budget increase was 42.8%. According to the current budget request, the county is seeking $80,826,925, which is a 14.4 increase over the previous year. This type of increase is not sustainable. An additional, in addition, an additional $31 million has come to Martin County due to increased property value and new construction. It's time to go back and come up with a budget with no increase. People are struggling to stay in their homes, it's never a good time to raise taxes, but this is the absolute worst time. I personally cannot support any commissioner that votes to raise our taxes here in Martin County in this current economic environment. Thank you.
Mr. Geisinger, good evening. You are followed by Darlene Van Riper.
Hi, this is Richard Geisinger, thanks for hearing me tonight. I think Patty and I are using the same numbers, so if I repeat them, you'll know why. This kind of feels like a 2002, 2006, 2007 discussion I had with the county commission at that time. And if you remember back then, real estate values were skyrocketing, providing additional income for the county, and instead of pulling back on expenditures, the county found additional areas to spend the money, which is easy to do, as we all know. We all know what happened in 2008, 2009, values plummeted, and the county was desperate to make ends meet due to their increased spending. Today, however, we have somewhat of a different situation. Although the real estate values have shot up once again, providing the county with additional income, the total cost for many residents has forced some to sell their homes and cut back on the necessities of life. The average cost of property insurance in Florida, which has already been mentioned, has shot up over 40% in the last year, according to the Insurance Information Institute. This is three times the national average. Additionally, the typical American household now spends an additional $8,500 annually for the same goods and services as they did in prior years, according to Moody Analytics. This is equivalent to an $8,500 tax increase. These increased costs have forced some homeowners to drop the wind coverage on their homes just to be able to live within their budgets. Of course, this is only doable if you don't have a mortgage on your house, right? According to the numbers pulled from the county budget website, and again, we looked at the last seven years together because that's, that was, what was on the site. The county's adopted budgets have increased, as Patty said, 42.8% during the previous seven years. Now, this is not adjusted for inflation, probably cuts that in half. But let me say that again, 42.8%, at the same time the population, same period of time the population had increased 4.7%. That relationship can't continue down that path, or we're going to be not able to, any of us live here. At that same time, the total taxable, taxable values for real estate and taxable entities increased roughly 12% per year. So we're having this increase in real estate values, which provides more money, and on top of that, we're increasing our budgets a lot more than 12%. As stated many times before, this disparity between population growth and county spending is not sustainable. If this continues, the county will become a county just for the elite, those who can't afford whatever increases that are implemented. So in closing, I respectfully request the county reconsider their budget proposal. Please act like it's your money. Ask yourself how you would handle this if it was your personal household budget. Most residents on fixed incomes have had to make tough choices in the past two years.
Richard, your time is up.
They have had to cut back on nearly every expenses. Please make the same.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Van Riper, you are next, followed by Glenn Schmidt.
Hi, Darlene Van Riper with the Martin County Taxpayers Association, your 73-year-old taxpayer watchdog organization. As was said by a presenter this morning, there is still a lot of confidence in local government, but it is waning. There have been too many frivolous expenditures approved, giving money to nonprofits. Did you not just this morning pass $85,000 to Special Olympics? It's an international organization. Why are we giving them money? Funding empty Marty buses, and I've been told the buses cost nothing, and the buses costs, don't cost us, but the gas, the bus drivers, the pension, everything else costs us. Empty Marty buses, building extravagant, extravagant county-owned clubhouses that went way over budget. Tossing, tossing standard approval measures out the window in order to ram through a waste management contract, which costs us $40 million more over eight years. Purchasing land having no conservation value simply to keep it from being developed. The sheriff wanting a budget increase of 16% to 18%. These are just some of the most egregious examples. The citizens of Martin County are hurting. As you are well aware, inflation has caused, affected the cost of many food items by 20%. Property insurance has skyrocketed, there may be a recession looming. It's time to be conservative with our fiscal decisions. We all know how it works. A department head will ask for more than they need in order to get a negotiated amount that they feel they can live with. I challenge you to take another look. There are further cuts that can be made, certainly. A rainy day may be just around the corner. The average median income in Martin County is $84,000. I ask you to think of those on the low side of that statistic. Those who cannot pick up a second job because they're on fixed incomes, or because the jobs just won't be there in the case of a recession. There is more that can be done, and I know, and we all in this room know, that every one of you is up to this task. Thank you.
Mr. Schmidt, good evening. You are going to be followed by Jim Fithean.
Come on down. Good evening. Glenn Schmidt, I'm here with my wife Laura, we are presidents of Palm City, your hometown.
Glad to see you.
Glad to see you. Well, I think you're hearing the, that there are no outliers on this issue of budget increases. So, Mr. Campi, you have set the first reasonable response to this reaction forward that I have heard this evening. So what is it, budget neutral? No. You need to go in the other direction. You suggested a $25 million reduction in budget, and I think that's where we need to go back to the drawing board. You are all capable of this, you are absolutely capable. There are efficiencies in all of the high technology that Sheriff Snyder has promoted that say, we catch bad guys with less people. That's what the technology does. So we need people, of course, we need people in every department, but the number of pet projects, as a Palm City resident, looking at the, the increase in our, in our world-famous tax, low and competitive tax rates, ends the story. That's it for history. You know, our low millage rate is reason people move here to retire. My wife is a nurse, now in management with Cleveland Clinic. I'm a salesman, I sell real estate. We raised our family here, and we're here to retire, not be priced out of our own home. And that's the reality of this. So if I have a minute and 34 seconds, I'm going to try and put this in the average person's view, and I'm hoping that that's something that everybody feels strongly about. So we get our tax bill, we look at our millage rates, we look at where we were just last year, not even 12 months ago, and where we will be on the proposed taxes. That's comparing on your bill, column three to column eight. And now, it gets egregious, because this is where the money is falling and, and being stripped away from homeowners. Line by line, general operations, increase on my home of 169%. I'm good at math, really good at math. District 5 MSTU, small number, looks insignificant, increase of 201%. School board, by local board. I moved my family with three little kids here for the best schools in the state, public schools in the state of Florida, and I was able to pull all three kids out of private school in Miami. So I'm a big public school fan. That's why people come here. There are a lot of reasons people don't come here. 15 seconds, are you kidding me? Line by line, increases of 162%, 159%, 164%, 164%, on and on and on. This is real, this is real money. This is money I owe you guys.
Sir, your time is up.
So thank you, you're doing the right thing. Follow the heads direction, $25 million cut, and I hope it was sincere.
Thank you, sir. Sir, before you begin, we've had you all day. After you, Mr. Fithean, will be Ms. Sheila Donovan.
My name is Jim Fithean, I live in Palm City. When, when we look at the budget, I would really hope that we would not throw the baby out with the bathwater. I believe, like many others in the room, that there's a lot of room for cuts. There's no question in my mind that there is, and I think you all do a good job, will do a good job in addressing that, especially after this audience tonight, but... But I am a total believer in law enforcement. I've been beat up in Hawaii when I was with my wife and my daughter, and the police were terrible. And in fact, I was able to identify the individual that was more than one. I guess I'm kind of proud. It was three, three people. Beat me up as we were driving home, and the police reaction was not appropriate at all. And when I pointed out, in a gigantic crowd on the beach, this is at night, middle of the night, and they were like, "Are you going to stay to do anything about it?" And I said, "Well, we'll be here another..." So the bottom line is, I know good law enforcement, and I know bad law enforcement. I think we all do. We have got a super, super sheriff that I don't know that we really appreciate to the point, when my wife or my grandchildren go out, I'm not worrying about it. I feel pretty darn good with this police force that we have. And I think they deserve this increase. I really do. Now, I'm probably going against the grain here, but if there's one service that we do not want to shortchange, it's this service. They deserve, and this is another thing, trust. I believe, I know him. I don't know him personally, but I can tell you, I have a trust factor with this guy, that he's asking for what he really needs. And I don't want the department to, in any way, reduce the level of service that we have. What's going on in the world right now should indicate to every one of us, we need these guys. I don't want them to leave. I want them to stay, and I don't think they're coming after us because they think they can take advantage. I truly don't. Now, the rest of the budget, serious concerns. And I think that there's a lot of room for cuts, but I do not believe that our law enforcement should be cut. I'm not for defunding the police. And look at, look at what happened throughout the country when they defunded the departments, okay? Now, we're just asking for funding, but I don't want to lose our super guys that we have, because I want the safety to continue. And that is a big part of why we are what we are in Martin County. So just all please, keep that in mind. We've got it really good. We don't want it to get bad, get bad, worse.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Donovan, good evening. You are going to be followed by Luca Cesario.
Hi, I'm Sheila Donovan. I live in unincorporated Martin County. And like everybody else, I've had an increase in my homeowner's insurance, my car insurance, price of groceries, gas, everything is going up. Honestly, I don't know if I'm going to be able to stay in my home. I would hope so. But maybe if we did some things like sell the $10 million country club, I don't understand why we have a $10 million country club. We've got two restaurants that we, we're not a restaurant company. We have a splash water park. It's nice and it's fun. Why? That takes a lot of people, a lot of money. Marty buses, I mean, I don't drive a lot anymore. I'm retired, thankfully, but I don't see people on those buses, other than the bus driver. Nonprofits, I like to give tax dollars to nonprofits, my dollars, not tax dollars. I don't think tax dollars should be going to nonprofits. And this morning, $85,000 for some Special Olympics person that, to my understanding, they don't even have to answer to anyone. And FPNL rate increase for the county, well, yeah, I'm paying that increase as well. So maybe if we sold the country club, the restaurants, the splash water park, the Marty buses, maybe we could put that money to work for the sheriff's department. Thank you.
Hi.
One second, please. I've just got to announce the next person. After Luca, it will be Gail Goldie.
So I actually moved here from Toronto, Ontario, Canada, last year, out of necessity. Found out my girlfriend was pregnant, she's American, dropped everything, drove down here, got married, living here now, going through immigration, purchased a property here, run a business. I really think that, you know, I moved here, coming from a place where high taxation, and I've seen the results of high taxation pricing people out of their own homes and communities back at home. I think it's a terrible thing to happen. I have friends that are in their 40s, you know, still can't afford a home, just as a result of where I'm from. Here, for example, I had a clean slate where I could possibly move. We looked all over the state. We settled in Martin County because my wife's family's closer to this area, Jupiter in particular, she grew up in Jupiter. I have to say, to start, Martin County is a bit more affordable, housing-wise, compared to a lot of other counties, hence one of the reasons we settled on this place. The property I purchased, the intention was to run a home business. Well, it's become to run a home business. Initially, it was to run a full-out business. I can't exactly do that. But I just want to say that I think someone moving into the state from, out of state, out of country, you know, I've seen from the previous owners that are now in Arizona, they had a homestead exemption that was significant, and I've seen, just on my own property, a 320% increase in property tax from the previous homeowner. And if this increase goes to the next budget increase, it's 380%. Now, I don't want to get into my personal finances and all that, but I'll say that we have to take into consideration all these new people are moving to Florida, and I don't think you should be punishing people that have been here for, you know, decades. I think that people like me that want to have the privilege to move to a new place should take that initial brunt on them to pay that tax increase, you know, not having a homestead exemption. I think you guys should take that into consideration when looking at statistics. How many people are moving to our county from out of state that don't have that homestead exemption? Because I think that it's a more significant amount than you'd, than you would initially think. Sorry, I'm a little bit nervous.
You're doing fine.
But yeah, how I feel about it is that I think, going back to what a lot of other people said, is like, you know, if you make this a business-friendly place, I think it's up to individuals to donate to just causes. You know, if you make this a business-friendly place, a family-friendly place, you know, someone such as myself with a young family moving here, you know, as you're more successful in your business, you can slowly start to delegate funds to places you feel are fit, and I think that's the best way forward. So I'm not in favor of the budget increase for those reasons. I think people moving out of, from out of state should be considered, you know, in that.
Your time is up.
Thank you. Ms. Goldie, after you, it will be Ms. Julia Sansevere.
Gail Goldie, Stewart, Florida resident, Martin County resident since 1986. Having reviewed the 2024 Martin County tentative budget, there are several areas and items that the taxpayers of Martin County should be aware of. Local governments are responsible for the day-to-day activities of the community, not running local businesses. The backbone of our community and our county are small businesses and the taxpayers. The county should be making pathways into one's town to enhance business that are already established and to attract new businesses, so that both will add to the tax base. Somehow, the wires are crossed in Martin County. For many years now, the county has taken up the mantle to hire county workers and to run local businesses on the county taxpayer-owned properties. We have Sailfish Water Park, which at this point should be leased out to a business entity who might include items that would entice locals to the water park more than just six months out of the year. We have two, I repeat, two beach cafes, one at Stewart Beach and one at Jensen Beach. Again, these should be leased out to restaurateurs who are interested in acquiring and running a local restaurant. We have a most recent and very expensive sandwich shop called Sailfish Sands, located at the Martin County Golf Course. Again, need to have someone in the county government to negotiate a lease for an individual or group interested in promoting a successful venture on that location. Last but not least, the mooring fields, and I'm sure that many of this county residents have no idea that we have mooring fields. The mooring field in Jensen Beach. Let's get back to running the government for the people of the county. If our commissioners and administrators have a desire to be entrepreneurs, step up and do it. Don't take it to the taxpayers. Parks and Rec employee. An $85,000 staff position on the agenda today, which was approved for the Special Olympics, which is a local charity and part of a national not-for-profit group. While a very worthy charity, it needs to be funded by charitable contributions and hire their own employees, not funded by taxpayer dollars. We each have special not-for-profits that we support. Does every not-for-profit that comes before you, are they going to get an employee on staff at $85,000 a year? That would be, I noticed on my way walking in here, I see that there's, I think it's two parking spaces out there for, for the support for one of the local charities, and I know that our commission does donate to that. So that's basically what I have to say. I would also, one other thing, the proposed budget includes a 12% increase for the county administrator and the county attorney.
Your time is up.
Julia, you are next. Julia, you are next, followed by Sherri Way. Ms. Sansevere, good to see you.
Thank you, thank you. Good to see you all. I know all of you, and I think you're all doing a really good job, and I want you to keep doing that job. But I can't support anyone who makes this county unaffordable. I don't have much more to add to what everybody has said. My husband and I are sitting back there going, "Boy, these are smart people. You have done your research. Thank you for speaking up." We are a Republican county, I thought. That usually doesn't mean tax and spend. That's the other guise. So I would think that if we could keep the status quo, from the graphs, it showed that there was a lot lower in tax revenue and a lot less spent just a couple of years ago. And a couple of years ago, in 2020, three years now, the house prices started to soar, and they haven't come back down yet. So with all that revenue from house sales, my goodness, there's certainly a big pot piled up there. And one of the things that the young Canadian said is, yes, when you come here and buy property, there's a reassessment, reevaluation of the property, and that's an appraisal issue. That's something that could be looked at, so it doesn't affect the next person so negatively. Because I am a Realtor, if you didn't know that, I am a Realtor, like Glenn Schmidt, and we're just trying to make a living, and it's not easy when the next person comes and they look at what their taxes will be, and they pull back from buying. We're creating a vacuum here of not being able to sustain our living, the living here. The living is just, the living ain't easy anymore, you know? And so when people move here, they move here because of the low cost of taxes. That's what they say, our millage rate is so nice and low, and I always brag and go, "Yeah, to the north and south of us, it's a nightmare. You want to be in Martin County." So I second and third everything everybody came up here to say, and I just want to add that, from a standpoint of taxes on real estate, you sure should have a whole lot of money there, and you can do the line item and switch things around. And if there was anything, I would say Sheriff Snyder did make a great presentation. I would say, "I like to be safe, but I'm sure we could keep that down, and you could find a way and not raise anything else." Thank you so much.
Ms. Way, you are our last request to speak forum, if any. Glenn Schmidt, that was you, Glenn. If anyone else, I was just about to say before Glenn cheered everyone on, if you are interested in addressing us, you can come forward, make your comment, and fill one of these forms out afterwards. Ms. Way.
Thank you. I'd like to thank every one of you up there on the commission for hearing me today. After hearing what everybody else has said, I'm glad I'm the last, because I don't have anything else to say, because everything has been said, except for that I want to just say this. I am a widow. I've been a widow now for five years. I moved down here in 2019 because this place has some roots. I remember my husband driving me down here and taking me through downtown Stewart. I live in Stewart, at Kingswood, and showing me that the theater there and every place else. He wanted to buy the theater and make a church out of it, and he almost did, but then one of our other people did for a season. So, you know, I'm really proud to be a resident here in Martin County, but I am a widow. I'm on social security. He didn't leave a lot. We were a ministry couple who just gave everything. And so I don't have much in the bank, but I also have two part-time jobs, and I'm really grateful that I am capable of working these two part-time jobs on top of social security, because, as I understand it, the median income is $84,000, and the poverty level is, right now, just a little under $12,000. Well, I am just a little bit above poverty level with my two part-time jobs. And so I would like to have you take into consideration that these businesses that the county is running should go to the private sector. Take into consideration that there are a lot of people in my age group, and I am over 74, that, well, barely over 74, but I'm getting there, that will not be able to afford to live here. And like I said, this place here is, it's home to me because it has some roots. My mother-in-law was here for many, many, many years, and she was one of the pillars of the community when she was alive. And so I really don't want to have to move. But I do come from Polk County, and I do appreciate what the sheriff said, but Sheriff Brady Judd works in his budget, and he's one of the best. So I know if he can do it, so can Sheriff Snyder and the Martin County Sheriff Department. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, guys. I'm Pamela Galena. I lived on Alpha Gomez in Hopestown. So back in the day, I started flying helicopters, and I used to fly on a lot of helicopters with the cops. And there's one thing about our helicopters that we have that I love, is that I've been in a helicopter where someone has robbed someone's home, and we went after him. We circled, yes, I was shot at, but so be it. I was out there having fun. No one ever said...
Might have to give you more than three minutes.
So I'm very much with what the sheriff is saying, because I've been in safety, I worked with the federal government, and I gave all those boys their check rides down in Broward County. But I agree, I don't understand why we have a golf course, we have things that I cannot do. I cannot go out and do all these things any longer, that's why I'm no longer flying. But I do like Schneider, I think he's excellent. And, but so, yeah, let's get rid of a lot of this. I'm single. I barely make my home. I bought my home at $200,000 for a tax base, and I redid the whole house. It was a foreclosure. And now it's up so high, I'm going, "Oh, my God," and I've only been there since 2015. But I did come up here, been in Florida now since 1985. And guys, it's hard, and this is crazy. I don't understand why a police department or anyone else gets a 16% raise. That's what I'm not understanding. But yes, I do support our police force 100%, but again, we need to cut it down. So maybe they get 5% like we all get, if we get that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm going to need you to, one second, sir. Ma'am, I'm going to need you to fill out a form. We'll get them to you. Sir, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Arch Schwartz. I live in Martin County. I bought a property here in 2004 with my wife, is originally an investment, and we moved here permanently in 2000. We love, we love the area. We love the fact that we're safe, and the fact that it's still affordable, still affordable. But these increases seem to be a little bit just too much to handle. Now, with respect to the businesses that the town or the county is in, there is one that you just don't take advantage of. And I give credit to my wife, Susan, because every time we're at a traffic light, we're watching people, probably from other counties, running red lights, and nobody does anything about it. I mean, this is a revenue stream if I ever saw one, if our police really wanted some money. So it's just one of those kind of things where, you know, I'm not coming to complain about the tax rate. I'm talking about, hey, how can we make some money without having to invest a lot more? And this is just something that's right out there for everybody. I mean, we got, there's cameras. I don't know if there's a law against them at this point, but for God's sakes, running red lights, people making illegal turns, and nobody does anything about it. So that was my comment, and it's just something that... So that was my comment, and it's just something that perhaps we could think about as far as generating some additional revenue with not a lot of additional expense. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sir, I'm also going to need you to fill out one of those request-to-speak forms. Ma'am, you're up. Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Roz DeGraff, and I live in Sewell's Point. So I'm here in Martin County. And they do a real good job with revenue on traffic going through Sewell's Point, so you might want to check with them.
Like a 200-foot length?
I'm not going to go into numbers. But anyway, what I do have here kind of supports what Julia was speaking about. I am also a real estate agent in Martin County. And the median sales price, and this is, this was as of Q2 this year. In the past four years, and I have a couple of copies of these, I'll be happy to share them with you. It says the red line shows the trend over the last four years. But if you take the last three years, once COVID started, through here, there's been a total increase in the median sales price of 60% in the last four years, bringing the average for 2023 for single-family homes to $585,000 average. This indicates an average appreciation year over year of 3.4%, which is a very stable number, okay? So just wanted to share that with you. You're going to have all that new revenue coming in. I'm hoping that you're not going to tax the rest of us and hit us again on top of that. So I have these to share.
Thank you very much. Sir, welcome. Please state your name for the record.
Yes, Larry Withersup of Stewart. I've lived, I lived in Palm Beach County since 1980, and 2017, I moved into Martin County, worked out at Pratt &amp; Whitney my whole career. A couple of things, and I've been through a lot of budget meetings, believe me, for billion-dollar programs. And one of the things that I noted here, a couple of things just came to my mind in the meeting, the $85,000 position, I'm really struggling with that, because I have, I never thought that it was the government's job to take my money and figure out who they wanted to donate it to. So I'm really struggling with that. Hopefully, I'll get over it. The sheriff's presentation was very good. I give him, he does, he does an outstanding job, but he's just like everybody else who's coming up for a budget. I mean, let's face it, he's doing a good job with the 2023 budget, right? He did a good job with it. So to come forward with an 18%, I think it's 18.8% increase, I don't know where it all goes. I mean, he, we can't say that if he doesn't get 18% more than he got in 2023, that he's not going to do as well as he did in 2023. So I think we've got to take that into account and put some restrictions on it, and look at going beyond budget neutral to a reduction overall.
Not that I'm challenging you to speak, but if, I want to make sure everyone that's took the time to be here had an opportunity to share their thoughts. Ma'am, are you getting up to speak? Okay. With that in mind, I think we'll draw to the end. We need to take a, someone, believe it or not, everything that was said, someone's typing it into our closed captioning service. So it's 7:00 PM. Let's take a 10-minute break for closed captioning, please.
Okay, we are back from our evening closed captioning break to continue our September 12, 2023 budget agenda item, our public hearing for the budget, first of two. We've taken public comment. We are now back to the commission and staff to hear, to take into consideration what we've heard and begin the process.
I just have a question.
Certainly. Commissioner Heatherington, question?
I just thought it would be helpful because someone asked me during the break, you know, Ms. Manning, that we're talking about, most, most of the residents were here talking about their millage increase, but there were a couple of questions, what goes into the budget, the budget as a whole? There's other, there's other revenue sources. I wonder if you could just give a brief synopsis, because I know we've been here a long time, on what other revenue sources make up the budget as a whole?
Okay, so if I'm talking about a general fund, for example, the general fund also has half cent sales tax, revenue sharing, it has fees from the, not the, what is it? The helicopter for fire rescue that comes into the general fund, was paid out of the general fund. We have the tax collector return fees to us as well, and the other constitutional small amounts of fees that come in. We have various revenues like animal control fees, we have franchise fees that come into the fund. So there are different revenue sources that hit the fund, you know, alcohol licenses and so forth. And those are major.
Again, I just posed that question, and I don't think people, it's difficult for people to understand what comprises the actual budget number when they see the 600 and 1 million opposed to the millage rate and how the revenue is calculated based on that.
So that's, I think that's the more broad question. So if you look at the total of the 275 million proposed in the budget, which is, comes out of your, your tax bill, the, the remaining 300 plus million is, is coming from other sources. Like, so the utility is a fee, you know, people pay their water bill, their sewer bill, and it, all of those funds can only be spent on water and sewer activities, and which you approve that budget as well, that is not on your tax bill. It comes in the form of a utility bill. The, so the building department is also fee supported, so their, their revenues are coming from people filing for building permits and getting their reviews done, and so you also approve their budget. And then, and then they have some money that exceeds where they're going to spend on staff, and that's in their reserves, and they're only allowed to keep a certain percentage of, of the reserves. And so if, so each area has, has different funds, so Public Works, for instance, has a lot of, they get gas tax money, we have grants from DOT, so that's the other thing, is all of the grants that we received are also appropriated within your budget. So, so that roughly half of your budget is coming from, you know, your property tax, the other half is coming from these other fees, grants, and then some of it is actually money that we've carried over that we're saving for projects into the future. So you, in your CIP, you may have a project that is expecting to spend, let's say in the coastal budget, a $10 million project at the inlet in a couple of years. There's a certain amount in that, in that CIP that is sitting in the bank waiting for that expenditure in two years. So that shows up in there. So you reappropriate that also every year. So that $600 million has all of those multiple pieces, and one of the challenges, I think, for most people to understand is that it is not all one pot of money that you're able to move money between. Utilities funds cannot be spent on a road, and a road fund can't be spent on a utility, or a road fund can't be spent on a sheriff deputy. You know, there are, each one of those, those funding sources, the analogy I use, like they're a flavor, but they can't be, they can't be mixed often with anything. Your general fund is the most spendable of all the funds in terms, you can spend it on all those different areas, but it's also the, the money that, it has the most competition, as you will, between public safety eating up, it's usually the biggest lion's share of that. And I think the only other thing, as long as I have the mic, just to point out, is that when you look at the, the budget from last year, I think it's important that we pointed out during our budget hearing, was that all of the departments, there were increases, but we were able to pay for those increases with, by paying off debt. And so the debt we paid off freed up reoccurring funds in, in your ad valorem, and because of the state revenue sharing, which is part of the state sales tax that comes back to us. You know, that paid for all of the increases in libraries and, and your other departments. And I think, you know, one of the challenges is government has been asked to act like, more like a business. And in one area that we've actually acted quite a bit like a business, which is in your parks and rec, that particular department budget actually came in with a zero increase because of the revenue that they're generating from, from their business activity. So I know that's maybe a philosophical issue that some of our, our constituents have in terms of, you know, should be we operate in a business, but in this particular case, in the Parks Department, they're, they're actually more than paying for themselves for, for this current year. So that's just a quick overview, and we can go into the various nuances. So much like the federal budget, when you start looking at how you want to do cuts, if you decide that public safety you, you set aside, then your, your, the only place you have to look is your capital budget, and there's not much new revenue in there, but you can always cut other revenues out of that. And then you're looking at your existing departments that, again, didn't ask for any new money, and so you're looking at cutting services.
Thanks.
Commissioner Hurd?
Yeah, first of all, I just want to say, to set the, the, to establish how this began, and the big, the biggest driver for this bloated budget, and it is indeed a bloated budget, was the Board of County Commissioners negotiations with the firefighters. And four commissioners approved a contract giving the firefighters a 12% increase in salary for, for the first year. I voted against it, and then the sheriff came in and with a me too request, or demand, for 12% increases for the sheriff's department. And that's understandable. And so right, because of that one action, approving the contract, that was guaranteed them contractually $5 million. And the sheriff's me too reciprocity guaranteed the sheriff $15 million contractually. So that's $20 million that is going, was approved by contract. So if we start taking away $20 million, the sheriff's department is going to take a decrease, and neither are the firefighters, because contractually, they are entitled to those increases, because of what, the action that this board took, this majority board took by approving the firefighter contract. So instead, if you start talking about taking away $20 million out of this budget, you're going to decimate the other departments, including, for example, the Teamsters, who are some of our lowest paid and hardest working employees. You know how much of an increase they're going to get this year? 3%. You're going to decimate our Parks Department, our libraries, our Road Department, our Stormwater Department, you know, every other department, because the, where the biggest increases are coming are not going to take any decreases. So I am not, I am not, I have absolutely zero interest in decimating the rest of our budget. It is, it's, I begrudgingly approved this budget back in July, and I will begrudgingly approve it again, simply because where the budget cuts need to be taken can't be taken, because they're promised through contracts. So I'm not, I don't want to carve up the budget. If you all want to carve up the budget, that's, you know, that's, that's your business. But we, we've already had this hearing, we've talked about it. You should have known the consequences when you approved that, that, that contract in the first place. I mean, we should have seen the writing on the wall.
Who was first?
I was.
Commissioner Heatherington?
I was just, time and time again, we heard it, we heard it tonight, you know, no one, no one really, no one wants a millage increase. But time and time again, we've heard about level of service. And what I heard from basically in this room, but what I hear every single day is there's a value placed on public safety, and it, fire rescue and public safety, and it's an expensive item in our budget. And I don't believe any of us wanted to give that percentage increase. But I think that if we looked at the numbers, if we're losing people, then we're paying for a less level of service. So I think it was said earlier by the sheriff, by many residents, it, it comes down to level of service and priorities. And I believe Commissioner Campy said, each one of us can sit up here and start cutting, and we would disagree on probably where and what, what kind of level of service. Me personally, public safety would be my, my number one, fire rescue, public safety. The sheriff was spot on. When I was in Orange County, in, in my car with my kids, we went kayaking in a place just like Jonathan Dickerson. We came out, my car window was smashed, everything in my car was gone, probably very safe, secure. Go in one gate, you pay for a state park, take it care of us. They wrote a report, you know, within six minutes, someone had my credit card at Target, six minutes. No one followed up, you know, I called and called. We have a high level of service. I think the chief did a great job of explaining how every one of our, many of our fire rescue, they're trained medical professionals, too. It's, it's a different day and age. Parks and Rec, I'm a fourth generation native, we grew up here. Parks and Rec, we used to have riding arenas, I remember at Big Mountain Park. We would build fences, you know, the kids, everybody, not that I expect that we would still do that today, nor would legal lettuce. But my philosophical view is that I'm okay with a simple playground for my kids, you know, to take them to the park and pathways, but I personally, and I've heard it from many residents, I want a high level of public safety. I want good drainage, but the fact is, we can't have it all, it's a level of service. The reason I didn't support the budget is because what some of the residents said is, it's, we cannot pass this on in this year. I believe that there's more room because people are getting hit, 50% in homeowners insurance, 50%. Most people have had a raise in homeowners insurance. We have retired seniors, and I'll, I'll say, I have parents that are retired. They won't be able to afford to live here in many years. I don't know if I'll be able to afford to live here in many years. People that have been here for generations are living, moving to Georgia and North Carolina, and we're losing all of our locals, and it's sad, it's sad to me. You heard a couple of the realtors stand up and talk about all the people that walk away because of the taxes. And real, true story, in my neighborhood, now, everybody wants to maintain their homes, so they're hanging on by like the skin of their teeth right now. And it doesn't affect everybody, it affects like, but a lot of our people that have been here for many, many years, and some that spoke that just bought homes. There's a neighbor in my, in my development, she's, we've been hit by homeowners insurance increases by about 50% property taxes. She's, she's paid it all, she's a senior citizen, 84 years old, you know, widowed for the last 20 some odd years. She's done everything that she's supposed to do. She's been living, because her air conditioning went out for two months, within 100 degree heat, maybe three months now, with no air conditioning, because she's paying all of these things that she's supposed to pay first. So she's up, you know, she's in her house with fans, and it, it's just, she's, she's probably going to lose her home. And I'm sure that's just one real story, but there's many, many, and I just, I, I will support the, the fire rescue and the sheriff contract, because we're going to spend the money for less level of service if the people keep leaving. So I believe that there's additional room for cuts. I can't see passing it on, because people will start losing their homes, and I sympathize with that. So that's, it's, to me, it's just a philosophical question. We might have to defer some of the things for another year, and that's just how I personally feel.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Smith?
So I suppose a lot of the same. I, I think, I think the opening statement of setting the stage for where this conversation is going, on what the majority does and doesn't do, I think you have to couple that with, you'd have to sit through every presentation, I think, of what we listen to and what we have to make decisions on and decide, if for our community, if the values that we place on our community are important, then how do you address that? For every discussion that we're having right now, there is a constituency for those discussions that believe what they want us to do is as important as the group that showed up tonight. Every constituency, bar none. I was, I was just writing things down as, as Dawn was talking and others, coastal, Dawn brought up coastal and dredging the inlet. There was a year where the inlet, there are multiple years, we have, we have got ourselves into a position when the inlet is filling in, and there was a constituency in this county that demands that that inlet be maintained, and it's safe and it's navigable. Ed, and I'm not picking on him, but Ed will remind us every time we talk about it, he doesn't have a boat. Doesn't affect Ed.
I don't have a boat.
Ed doesn't have a boat. It doesn't affect Ed. We have an entire industry in Martin County that survives off the inlet, an enormous industry. Maybe it affects, you know, maybe 90% of Martin County never uses the inlet. And so if you were to use that equation, maybe 10% does, 90% doesn't, why are we spending the money on 10% of the people that use the inlet? It's part of what makes Martin County Martin County. Stacy just mentioned the Parks Department. Over the last 10 years or 12 years, I think Kevin Abate has been here, we have turned the Parks Department not into what it used to be, but into a Parks Department that only, not only delivers a remarkable level of service with what we do give them, but he has now a handful of operations that are running, that are plowing money back into the Parks Department that we don't have to raise the Parks Department's budget, because it's making enough money that they're sustaining themselves. There is a debate, absolutely. Should we be in the golf course business, or should we not? If you all were to come back here from four years ago, or five years ago, this room was filled with people that were accusing the board of selling off the golf course and turning it into a condo development. And there was, there were board members that thought that that was a reasonable idea. Why did we need to own a failing golf course that was costing us money? It's now turned the corner where it is making money, is very successful. They have done a remarkable job, and we have a constituency base that treats it as if it was a park-like amenity for the, for the group of individuals that use it. Should it be privatized? Certainly could be. Absolutely could be. So the philosophical question, me anyway, are we providing our residents with a level of service, as it's used up here in the conversation, and are the constituents that are using it, do they view that as an asset of Martin County for a reason that they live here? I will guarantee you, there are hundreds of individuals in Martin County that view the golf course as an asset and a reason to be here. Some people don't like it. Fair enough. A lot of people don't like how much we spend on reneurizing beaches. Fair enough. We spend millions of dollars reneurizing our beach. It's an asset. It's a piece of infrastructure. It's no different than resurfacing I-95. Why do we resurface I-95? Florida Department of Transportation and the federal government won't allow it to go below a certain level of, of standard for safety, and for all, all sorts of other reasons.
Well, we're not resurfacing it.
No, we're not.
Say this, I just want to make sure everyone knows, we are not doing that.
And so, all of the different things we do, all the different things we fund, there is a purpose and there is a reason behind it. Could we decide to be out of the business of doing it? Sure we could. There were years, and, and when I first started doing this, the county commission MSTUs funded by and large the resurfacing, we'll use this analogy, of the roads in Martin County in our districts. We had county commissioners that absolutely would We had county commissioners that absolutely would not spend a dime resurfacing roads in their district. They didn't believe in it. I don't want to spend money in Hope Sound on roads. Wasn't Commissioner Jenkins, but it was another commissioner down there. We changed that policy and we went to a system of resurfacing our roads that was based upon pavement condition. Every single road in Martin County got an allocation of a condition assigned to it, and we maintained them to a standard to where everybody is treated the same because they're all county residents that use all of our county infrastructure on our roads. Again, Jen Salas in the room with our libraries. How many do we have, Jen? Six? We don't have to have six libraries, right? How many counties actually have a county library in every district that they serve? Jen, I don't know. Maybe they all do, maybe, maybe every county does, but I can assure you that Hendry County doesn't have probably a library in every single district. But we have a constituency in Martin County that places a ridiculously high value on our library system. We fund a great system to the best of our ability, and thanks to Jen, we run a great system. So the priority we placed on our fire rescue and on our sheriff's department, again, it's a philosophical difference. Do we believe, do we believe, and these are real, these are real issues, should we be paying $3 million a year in overtime for fire rescue? Or should we staff the department adequately and get rid of the overtime and not have the overhead costs that we carry for the overhead, or for the overtime? It's philosophical. We can run overtime, we can run our staff into the ground. The sheriff's department will tell you, the sheriff didn't say this earlier, and it's not that he didn't want to, I think he was just, as he was explaining why his budget is the way it is. The sheriff's department is getting to, or was getting to, the point where people were refusing to do overtime. What do you do? And whether we like it or not, we absolutely compete. I say compete, we're in the market basket of Palm Beach and Broward and Dade. We will never be able to get to the level and the values at which they are compensated down there, but we've got to be somewhat competitive. And it's a real problem. We do lose staff, a lot of staff down south. But those are value decisions. Do you give, do you, so, we place, a lot of comments tonight were interesting. My property values have increased, my tax bill is X, and I don't want it to go up. Fair enough. I think all five of us heard that. But how did the values get where they are? Why are they the way they are? Because of the assets that we have. And I would argue in many cases, if we didn't have the Parks Department we have, if we didn't have the library department we have, if we didn't have the coastal department we have, if we didn't have the fire rescue sheriff's department we have, you would not see the types of values and you wouldn't see the strength at which this county is valued at. The people that want to move to this county, and we hear every single, it's always fascinating to me, everybody starts off by when they moved here. I moved here 15 years ago, I moved here 27 years ago. We had an individual that came up, you know, a couple of hearings ago and said, I want to move, but this, this, and this. And so how do we, how do we, how do we balance all of this out, and how do, how do we do this? And where do you place, where do you place the dollars, and what is the right thing to I'm not, I'm not trying to accuse the other four individuals, I'll just speak for myself in terms of where I place that value. Some like to blame others up here for why we are where we are. No, the reason we are where we are is because our community as a whole demands us to be there. Yes, we had a room of 100 people tonight, no question. Absolutely, we had, 100 people showed up, fantastic. There's 159,000 other people that live here that we represent, and they all have their interests. I'll call out another thing, and this is, I think, a part of how I make a decision, how I think about making a decision. And it was pointed out tonight, we are in the process of acquiring a piece of property out in Palm City that, a huge constituency of Palm City turned out to support. Whether I thought it was a good idea or a bad idea, the 200 people that were in this room and out in the lobby, or how many yet, I don't know, roughly 200, right? Does their vote not count? If it was two people that showed up, or 20 people showed up, I might debate that that is a different story. You get 200 people during the day that show up and say, I want you to do something, I'm your voters, I'm your taxpayers, I want you to do, it doesn't matter at that point what your personal opinion is. They have rights too, just like every, the 100 that showed up tonight, as equally important as the 100 that showed up tonight, were the 200 that showed up for that item. And I, and I think we made the right decision for our community because that's what they wanted us to do and expected us to do, and we took their direction. How can you, I'd like to almost say, how can you say, or how can we say that that was the wrong decision, because then if we were saying that, we're saying, no, those 200 people were wrong. No, they weren't, it's our community. It's important to them. So I say all of this because it's a difficult thing to get to. If you were to try it, and as Sarah had said, whether we agree about how we got here or not, and I don't agree with that, doesn't really matter. The choices are fairly narrow in terms of what we're really operating here, or operating with. And so if you're not to touch public safety, and you're to hold them that harmless, if you will, to take 16 million or whatever the number would be out of the rest of the budget, you would dramatically change everybody's expectation of what this county is. And that's, those are choices. We did it, we did it during the recession. We laid off 90 people, Dawn?
Didn't lay them off, it was voluntary separation.
Voluntary separation, sorry, wrong words. Voluntary separation? 90?
Yeah, roughly 90 to 100, we eliminated positions in.
And when you get to the kind of number we're talking about, that's the type of impact that happens. And so I'll use Jen as the perfect, for instance, Jen, we cut back, what, five days a week? We cut back libraries? People were furious that we cut, they understood at the time, but they were furious that we did that. So I'm curious to see what everybody has to say, but that's where I stand.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we've heard.
I have one other thing, I'm sorry, I just, I was looking, I think, one other theme that popped up tonight, and I wish the 100 people were back in the room, and hopefully they went home, and hopefully they're watching what we're all saying. I would say at least one out of two that got up and spoke, if not 50% of the people, touched on things that were hurting people financially at home, right? Would you all agree, are the people that are still left in the room, property insurance, uniformly across the board is something that's hurting everybody? Our state has not solved that problem. That's not a Martin County issue. It's an issue for all of us, but it is something the legislature has to grapple with and the governor has to grapple with. And the fixes that they went into special session for last year, I don't know anybody that has told me that those fixes were dramatically indicative of reductions in insurance. And so, I would say, as concerned, and rightfully so, as people are about our budget, we have got to transfer, not transfer, we have got to communicate the insurance industry louder and stronger to our state. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Jenkins?
I agree with everything that's said, even including Commissioner Hurd's comments. What started this is definitely the negotiation with fire rescue. What she left out was, we didn't have a choice. Didn't have a choice. I run a business that has 100, actually, I don't run it anymore, my kids run it, 120 employees. I have a rotating door of the bottom 20 people in my company for the exact same reasons that fire rescue couldn't draw in good candidates and retain them. Same thing. This employee inflation is unsustainable. It will bankrupt everybody. We get it. We didn't have a choice, right? Were we going to pay overtime, like Doug was saying, or are we going to actually staff our system properly? And yes, the sheriff has a me too, right? So these are things that we did not have a choice, these are business decisions, just like me trying to retain my, my high-end or high-level employees, to retain them and attract them to my business, I've got to pay them, and I got to pay them more than anybody else is willing to pay them, right? And we have somebody down south that's got deeper pockets than us, you know, and, and it's literally a 10-minute drive, you know, from the center of the county. It's a fact that we've got to do. I'm, I would love to have a zero balance, or a zero thing, like we've been talking about all day. I don't see how we get there. Commissioner Heatherington, you had thrown out a number our last meeting, under 2%, right? How far are we away from that? Is that attainable?
Seven million.
That's to. That's to zero. You, I had asked you what it would take for you to support the budget, and you said anything under two, or under two is what you said, right? Yes, and then I asked Jennifer what that number would be.
I think I supported it, but.
Okay, well, you know, it would be great if we were all on the same page, it'd be great if we all agreed, if we're going to cut something, we're going to cut it.
Then, then let me be honest then, it, when we make those decisions, I, again, I philosophically don't agree when we're raising people's taxes and we're adding things that I, again, don't agree. I'm not saying it's not Special Olympics, it's not a valuable service to the community, but I feel like you can't pass that on to the taxpayers. And that is just philosophically what I believe. I don't believe that it's sometimes, we may agree or disagree, that, you know, in-house striping companies, and Sean did an excellent job on the FTE, and next year I might be convinced that that's going to save the county money, the energy efficiency, but I, every person we add increases FRS and, and, and those are things that we know we can't control. So I don't necessarily agree, me, you know, and philosophically, on, and some of the people that I have conversations with and represent, again, Doug said, every constituency is different. So I've heard, you've heard people that just want simple parks, and they don't want elaborate landscaping, and they don't want, you know, of course, they want the streetlights, but they don't want us to maintain them. So it's, that's just about the kind of level of service we expect, and how we may, may agree or approach or disagree. But I'm not sure that we would all five agree on how we spend everybody's money, just like we, every household may not. I just think it's a hard, hard year, and when people start losing their houses, which they are going to do, then we are going to have to do something, and we're always talking about affordable housing. And what's not affordable is the people that have lived here forever cannot afford taxes, insurance, and it's not all our fault, it's, you know, Doug says, it's the state, there's a lot of different factors, but I'm sympathetic to do whatever I can with the dollars that I'm entrusted to of the taxpayers.
I guess I'm asking you, what can you do? What is your suggestion? Where, where do we go from?
I would, I would then defer that to Dawn, if, if there's, you know, you present a budget, you know, departments present, and I, I could go through and strike some of the things you want, but you vote, you know, again, I don't think $85,000 at a time is a way to clip at it, but that to me is the responsibility of the department heads and administration to bring a budget, and if I ask, or if you ask, to please bring a budget that is something that is palatable within a certain number, then that, I leave that to administration's discretion.
What's the number?
I think that we, we can't, we can't sustain a 2.67. I think we need a neutral budget this year.
So take off 8 million plus the 4 million for Ed's purchase in Palm City, so knock off 12 million and you can support it?
I'll support a neutral budget.
Okay, then what, what do you propose striking?
Again, I, that is, we pay a lot of money to our department heads and our county administrator to come with a budget. So if you, you want me to start going through the budget? Michael Circus went, spent 15 hours. I'm not saying that all of Michael Circus's comments were appropriate, but I, it's, it's, it has too big of an impact. So I won't support a 2.67% increase, you know where I stand on it. If you can get down to a flat with no mileage increase, I'll support the budget.
First off, I appreciate Mr. Circus going through the budget and doing this. Our staff did respond to every one of his issues. Some of them, there were debatable, some of them, I think he would have, would agree, have been answered to his, to his questions were legitimate, maybe some he would disagree with. There's not $8 million there. I hear, and today was just a weird timing in terms of the $85,000 for the Special Olympics, that was a year-long conversation of where that should or should not go. I mean, I have no problem, I was in the, in the majority on that decision. If it's a symbolic situation, I would make a motion, I would pass the gavel and make a motion to.
You wouldn't have to, I would.
Reconsider that. If that's, if, it's, it's a, I get it, you know, under a different set of circumstances, we had the ability to meet with those people, understand what they're doing, hear what they're asking. To me, it was a matter of using very small amount of our money to address a un, you know, lower-serviced constituency of the 4,000 people that are special needs in the community, they only have 400 people that participate. This one position, they sat down with me for well over an hour, a couple of different times, and explained how that would exactly benefit our constituencies. The thing for me is, if you don't play golf, you don't care about the golf course. If you don't have a boat, you don't care about boat ramps. If you don't, you know, whatever your, pickleball versus tennis is a huge issue for us now. They come to blows in parks because they don't want any more tennis courts, they only want pickleball courts. If you play, if your kids play soccer, lacrosse, football, whatever, baseball, there's a constituency group for that. Those, those parks, look, I agree that the golf course restaurant should be managed by a private entity. Commissioner Heatherington and I were on that. It was originally, because that's what we had asked, only one person applied to run it, it was before it was even constructed and finished, so they probably didn't exactly understand what they were getting themselves into. Hitting bays and the restaurant is different than just opening up a restaurant, the people that ran it, even though I will give them credit, the food and the service was first rate. However, they weren't paying their rent, so we had to pull the plug on them. After a lot of, our staff did a remarkable job of trying to negotiate them, to mentor them into some kind of way that they could keep doing it. But if they can't afford to pay the rent in November, December, and January, they certainly can't afford to pay the rent in June, July, and August. So we rolled them, and we put in place, for the time being, our county Parks and Rec staff that have a track record of being able to deliver on what we ask of them. In terms of having a municipal golf course in the first place, Commissioner Smith's right. Back when that was an issue, we've had a commercial, we've had a community golf course for decades and decades and decades, and then it was deemed that the clubhouse needed to be torn down, there was mold issues, it was old, I wasn't in, I wasn't in office at the time, and we reconstructed. at the time, and we reconstructed. It went from the Taj Mahal to something else, to something else, to something else. The two snack bars, I think the county, we could be in the snack bar business. We shouldn't be in the restaurant business. That's my personal opinion. Some of us disagreed with that. We're letting them sort of have a test run with it to keep it going, just to get people back in, because even the couple of weeks that it was closed, people were losing their minds. I can do whatever we want with the budget. I hear my colleagues, I don't have animosity towards any of my colleagues. I liked what Commissioner Jenkins said, that he agreed with everything, even what Commissioner Hurd said. The, the chief with the fire rescue was here explaining the set of circumstances that they were in, and I said to him, you don't, you're not happy about a 12% increase? He's like, no, I'm not. But, I mean, I'll, any one of our constituents could have sat in on those meetings, and at the end of the meeting, when they lay out exactly, it could be this or this. The overtime, which has been something that we've been dealing with since I'm a commissioner, a couple of times we would go with these safer grants, where we would put in 10, 15, 20 people at a time, because the, what won't happen is, people still called 911. There was a woman that said we should go back to EMS, uh, volunteers, right out of high school. That never would work here. I mean, I happened to be recently at an event where someone had a relatively minor injury. He had a knee replacement, and it popped open weeks after surgery. And he was, where we were, was deep in a neighborhood, and I believe fire rescue responded pretty quickly. And this was not a life-threatening situation that we were in, but it felt like a long time. And for that gentleman, it was a long time. And so, I don't believe, and I wouldn't want to participate in, the, the decreasing of the level of service, that's the first thing that people expect. You call 911, if it's, if it's a criminal emergency, you expect really fast, the cops have to show up, the sheriff's deputies, really fast. It could be a matter of life and death. If you call 911 for fire rescue, it has to be responded to really fast. They have to have the proper gear, the proper training, the proper personnel. There was someone that said about, well, you know, we're tired of seeing the rest, the, the engine follow the rescue. That's a conversation and a debate that's been going on in Martin County for 20 years. All you have to do, if that's something, my dad was the first one, why does the engine have to follow the rescue? Ask them. It's, there's a very logical reason why the engine follows the rescue to an emergency call. Not every single time, but it's actually an economic advantage and a medical advantage to have that. It's a cheaper way of doing business versus having a separate rescue. And it's a long story, we don't need to get into it tonight, but Commissioner Hurd was not in favor of the budget for fire rescue, that negotiation. We sat in there, she was not in favor of it from the very beginning. I was not in favor of a 12% increase either, but when they laid out to me, as your rep, one of your representatives, they convinced me. And I think if you have serious questions about exactly how that system works, call them. The chief, he's got a financial, they apply for grants, they apply for all these different opportunities, they're doing a terrific job. And for me, I don't have employees anymore, but when we're sitting in that meeting, and Commissioner Jenkins is saying that the bottom 20 of his employees in the landscaping profession, maybe bushes won't be installed correctly, or a delivery won't be made, or, you know, there are opportunities for a poorly-trained employee to crash a truck or damage something, but they're not EMTs or paramedics. When we talk about that they're leaving, that's a serious concern, that if we had catastrophic results from that, or you watch your, your overtime budget just explode, we are, I felt that that was the appropriate decision to be made. They went around and did plenty of meetings in public, and, and I spoke to groups about it, and, excuse me, HOA groups, and when you get the opportunity to hear it, hopefully reasonable, uh, people would agree with that. So, then we're back to the regular budget. I was serious, and I was very appreciative that the sheriff came to discuss it. His number would have to be addressed, because as Commissioner Hurd said, we would decimate the rest of the departments. Now, some people have no problem with decimating the rest of the departments. If you don't go to the library, you don't care that they're closed on weekends, you don't care if there would be three of them instead of six of them. But if we're going with the barometer of filling the room with angry constituents to dictate what we do and do not do, that'll just happen all day long. I heard someone use the expression, legislating by t-shirt. I don't think of it that way. Commissioner Smith mentioned the, the group that came from Palm City. Look, how many of you feel or have said or, or encountered, you think there's too much development happening in Martin County? There's too much traffic in Martin County. Well, we had a project that I felt, and the constituent, I live in Palm City, and a constituency, not 150 people, 15 different HOAs were represented in a meeting, 15 Palm City HOAs, obviously representing thousands of Palm City constituents. It was 90 apartments, because of some very specifics we won't get into today, that would have been right on Martin Highway. Not affordable housing, so when people say, well, how dare you not do affordable housing, directly next to the main entrance to Palm City Elementary School, 650 kids go in and out of that street. I got emails and calls from people that said, who cares about those kids going to Palm City Elementary School? That's a sheriff's issue. Not really. If they built those new apartments right on the sidewalk in Palm City, people would have lost their minds. I tried to create a situation, because it's accurate. It's a by right, the developer was allowed to build there. That doesn't mean that we just close our eyes and let them. I'm a property rights advocate. We didn't try to take the property away from them, we didn't try to backdoor them. They came forward and offered up a proposal for us to purchase the property. And it came before the board, and thankfully, my colleagues, not all, but most, majority of my colleagues, agreed to do it. It's not gonna necessarily be a park. I told people specifically that all we were trying to do was acquire the property first, and then we would reach out to the community as a whole in Palm City and say, what should it be? There are advantages. We could sell it back to the private sector and turn it into something that would be much more palatable for the community. Originally, it was gonna be 40 townhomes. No one had a problem with 40 townhomes. It's when it switched over to 90 apartments with 123 parking spaces that it became a problem. Now, it's like a rally cry, and, and people are furious at me for doing that. That's exactly how the system should work. The residents saw a problem, they came to their elected official, lots of them, to several of us, and said, we don't want this. And we came up with an idea to correct it. It's $4 million. Now, we're not gonna get into it tonight. The appraisals have come in, both above $4 million, okay? So, that being said, we're addressing the issue so that when the majority of the residents, who have no idea that that was coming their way, they wouldn't have known until the trees were bulldozed down and the buildings start to be built, would people lose their mind? And at that point, it would have been too late. We're going to fund it through one way or the other, even temporarily, within the district. Jensen Beach residents, Stewart residents, Hope Sound residents, Golden Gate residents will not be paying. The Palm City residents, which will benefit or, or suffer the consequences of that project, we will pay. I personally, and obviously I'm part of it, I think is a remarkable plan. I think that's exactly how the system is supposed to work. Now, tonight, with the budget back to this, I don't know. You heard what I said. I did not commit to cutting $25 million out of the budget. You know, there's a certain point where, where do you stop? Okay, now, I get, I, I have a 40-year-old wooden house with an old roof and old windows. My insurance is $8,600. It's like a punch in the face. I get it. So, to Commissioner Heatherington's point, if it's a zero, uh, increase, then it's easy to say, and I get it, and I respect Commissioner Heatherington, she's my friend. Don, figure it out. But part of us, it's our responsibility, because we represent the public. Because if Don comes forward with a budget that he and our leadership say, we've cut out $8 million, here it is, the five of us are gonna look at it and be like, well, I don't want that thing to be cut, and I don't want that to be cut, it would almost have to be a workshop process. Several times, I have sat up here for budgets, and Commissioner Hurd would say, I'm not supporting the budget. And we would say, fine, what would you cut? And we literally start cutting the budget. Now, those were much more achievable numbers than we're at now, because we've already done this once for 6 million, but you don't know the 6 million, you're just looking at the 8 million. So, when you start shaving and shaving and shaving the muscle off of this person, what are you gonna start cutting? So, I'm willing to do that. I also understand and appreciate the hard work that our staff has put into creating this budget with a 2.6% increase. I think a lot of the information, and I respect people that come, but a lot of what you heard in public comment, you know, would have to be taken with a grain of salt, because not everything that you heard tonight is accurate in every single instance. People are passionate about their opinions, but the five of us have to look at the bigger picture. Commissioner Smith said it. If 500 people or 1,000 people came tonight, there's still 159,000 other people. I am very respectful of people that are financially struggling. I am not a, my family and I, we're not wealthy. We're not poor, but we're not wealthy. Um, when we did not cancel the New Monrovia septic-to-sewer project, we asked our staff to go back to the drawing board, because the room was filled that day with people that just literally, $1,000, which it would have been $500 a year for 20 years, on their taxes. They said they couldn't pay it. I couldn't with a straight face look at people and say, well, we don't care. You're gonna pay the 9,000 anyway. The other problem was, it wasn't 9,000 per house. If you had a house with two empty lots next to it, you paid 9, 9, and 9. If you had a house with a brand-new septic system that you just put in, you were still paying 9. And 9 doesn't get you hooked up, you still had to pay 2,000 or 3,000 more. I represent the public, so does our board. Unanimously, we said we can't do it. So, tonight, as the chair, my only extra duty above any of my colleagues is to sort of facilitate a conversation. We all get a chance to put our two cents in. We need to facilitate the conversation. If the conversation is that we're expecting it to go back to our staff, for them to shave what I said to the sheriff, and I, I am a huge fan of the sheriff and his department, because if anything really were to go terrible, we would all automatically look and say, you know, all the things you see on television, criminals racing into stores and filling their arms and just walking right out. It actually, didn't it just recently happen in Dick's Sporting Goods in Jensen? Didn't that happen? Am I making that up?
It did.
It did, right? So, I mean, we're not immune to that, but everyone is singing the sheriff's hashtag wrong exit. I love that. He's got thousands of followers on his, on his Facebook page. Those two things are, are very important to me, but I would shave them. I think the sheriff understood when he stood here, he was, like he said, he was an appropriator. If you're not familiar, he was a state rep before he was this job. And so, I think he would get it. Um, he did already give us 700,000 off of the budget, but I, I agree with, my final comment is, I agree with Commissioner Hurd. It can't come all from the other two departments. And from what I heard, we can't even necessarily start shaving off from fire rescue, because they're a separate funding source, correct?
The, the fire rescue has its own MSTU, but when you look at the overall millage, you can cut, I mean, there isn't really, you have contractual obligations, but I'm just saying that the, the MSTUs affect ultimately the property tax. So, when you look at all of them, um, so, the general fund, in looking at the sheriff, which is a part of what we talked about, the, the fire rescue MSTU is also an ad valorem tax. So, it is, is, is part of that bottom line of that 2.607% is, includes them.
Okay.
So, if you go to zero, then, then they, if you, again, if you don't include them, then it comes off of your other county departments to make up for that increase.
And I don't see, I get that we have a contractual agreement, but their entire budget is not the contractual agreement.
That's correct.
So, if the appetite of my colleagues is to get to a zero, then I think you have to look at everything, not leave a couple of the largest and take it out of the rest of the departments, because I'm just guessing, you'd have to disband departments to get to the number that we're talking. So, if that's the will of the board, then, then that's what it is. And look, hard decisions on behalf of the public, that's why people voted us to be up here. Commissioner Hurd, you're next.
Yeah, my impression is that Commissioner Heatherington is not going to support any budget tonight. So, that means that we have to, we can start hacking, or we can adopt this one. And if you have, don't have a supermajority, in other words, if only three commissioners vote for it, then what do you have to reduce off of the budget by law?
So, for the general fund...
This is may more complicated than you think it is. This is going to become real ugly, real fast.
Yeah, so if you, if we're relying on a 3-2 budget for the general fund, we have to remove 18 million dollars.
All right, start. Anybody wanna remove 18 million bucks from his budget?
Just a question of clarification. What's the, you showed me a sheet.
Yes.
That says 7.9, that one, what's the dollar amount?
So, that's, that, that is to get you to a millage rate that would be the same as last year's millage rate. And so, and that could be a combination of the general fund being a negative millage increase, you know, while the general, while the MSTUs were increased, so you can, but ultimately, that 8 million dollars out of ad valorem taxes would get you to, the millage overall on your tax base would be the same as it was last year. If you were, which, which would be a, a zero millage increase. Now, it would still be above the rollback, so you, when you do your resolutions, you're still going to have a, a percent over the rollback. Now, if you said, I want to, uh, based upon the, the, the state and, and the rules by which it requires a majority vote, because of the percent over rollback, um, you need, for the general fund, four votes to approve the general fund, which includes the sheriff's budget, for anything that we have presented so far requires a 4-of-1 vote. Now, interestingly enough, the fire rescue MSTU, which is an increase, only requires a 3-2 vote. So, if you were, said, I wanted to get, and it was, if there was a difference of opinion on how the budget was being put together, and if only we could ever get three of you to agree on whatever combination that is, you would have to remove 18 million out of the general fund in order to get to a 3-2 vote. So, that simply just adds the complexity in terms of, ultimately, even for you to get rid of 8 million, you need four people, four commissioners to agree that you agreed on the holistic view of the, that all that 8 million. If any one of you disagree, then you have to keep going to 18 million.
Okay, just a clarification, and then we're going to Commissioner Heatherington. To get to a 0% increase over last year, 8 million dollars.
That's correct.
And then you would need how many votes to do that?
Four.
But we've heard that a neutral budget would bring votes. Commissioner Heatherington?
Okay, I'll be brief and just clarify. I just heard the same, 8 million. It, we've become a very, you know, I'm, I'm not trying to be difficult. I, I respect everything staff put into it. I respect all my colleagues. I'm really not trying to be difficult, but philosophically, it is the way that I, and I truly believe that this is not the year to do this to people, and there are people hanging on by a thread. So, again, I'm not trying to be difficult. I think we could cut to 7 million. If you all wanna vote on, on the rollback rate, and staff is, wants to go back and see, I will not support the current 2.67. If you all wanna come back on September 26th, you wanna vote on the rollback rate, and you think there's more that can be done, and on September 26th you present that, I will be happy to support the budget.
You're saying rollback rate? That's, that's a miscommunication, correct? That's a miscommunication, correct? We're not talking about the rollback rate. We're talking about a constant.
0% millage increase.
That's a constant.
Yes.
Yeah, not a rollback, that's different. So we just heard Commissioner Heatherington.
Say, go ahead and vote.
One more thing. Again, I just, I wanted to say that it was just...
Is that what you just said?
One sec, one at a time, we have... One at a time, please, Commissioner Heatherington.
Let me take a second. Again, I started to say, it's, you know, every commissioner is right, but it's become somewhat of a selfish society. Yes, we need boat ramps. Yes, we need pickleball. It has to be cut. I think, you know, I don't care if there's 500 people waiting for pickleball and 200 for boat ramps. Like, everybody has to understand that the cuts should come equally. Because no one, I mean, regardless if you want pickleball or landscaping, no one wants tax increases, nor can they sustain them. So I'm happy to say to constituents, okay, less pickleball, less boat ramps, less this, if we could, and I'll stop.
Tell us where, you've said the same thing like 10 times.
But you're asking me to go in line by line...
Where do you want to focus on?
Across the board.
Give us some direction.
So you want me to go through...
You want to go to the sheriff. You want the sheriff, you want to diminish the sheriff's...
If you could go back on September 26th and ask every department, and if that includes the sheriff, it includes the sheriff. But we have 7, it's only 7 million. It's 7 million.
We can probably break the logjam by reading the resolutions and see if we get enough votes to adopt the budget. Because I don't think we're making any progress here.
Well, I want to be careful. I want to be careful about the philosophical beliefs. Philosophically, I don't think any of us are looking for any increase. I agree with what the residents, what we're hearing. The residents would appreciate zero increase. We heard it. Now, obviously, we didn't hear from 160,000 people, but most people, if you say, "Would you like to pay more or the same?", they'll say, "The same." We heard some people tonight say, "Less." I get that. I want to pay less. Everybody does. But getting what we're having, if Commissioner Heatherington is saying that philosophically she believes that's the case, then I believe Sarah does, and so does Commissioner Jenkins, and so does Commissioner Smith. I know I certainly do. So I don't want to participate in a situation where we look like some of us are not agreeing or understanding what the residents are thinking, and some of us do. If, all in, all out. Commissioner Smith.
So how long before our final hearing? What is it?
Two weeks.
Two weeks, right? I think to be fair, to, if you were to say, if we were to give Dawn direction tonight to go back in the next two weeks, figure out how to come up with 8 million out of the existing budget, right?
We have to read the resolutions. We would have to read the resolutions and...
No, 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 hang on.
Okay.
If we read the resolutions tonight as they are presented, but the direction we give Dawn is to come back at the final hearing with $8 million worth of reductions, we can still reduce.
Yes.
We can't increase. All right?
Yes, correct.
I think part of that has to be that the constituencies that are impacted by those reductions have to be notified. I don't think we can just do this in a vacuum and say, "Dawn, show up on," whatever night, what was the date?
26th.
The 26th of September with $8 million in reductions, and we'll support that. Because the 100 people that showed up tonight may come back in two weeks and show up again, which is fine. But if we don't notify, let's say it's the pickleball group. This past season, every week I heard about, "There's not enough pickleball, and we need more pickleball courts." And as a matter of fact, away with all tennis courts. And we don't care how much that costs, we want our pickleball. End of story. All right, there are no, there is no debate, right? I think you need to inform the pickleball people, they're not going to get new courts. And I don't, I don't mean to be like, how that sounds really, but I think you have to do that. Because I think if we're going to have this debate, which is fine, I think the constituency that's going to be impacted needs to be able to come and voice their opinion, just as everybody did tonight. Because they were informed tonight, and they were, the alarm was sounded that there was going to be a tax increase, so come and defend a non-tax increase. Because in prior years, we get one or two people show up to our public hearings, and I don't recall 100 people showing up to a budget hearing for, I don't know, 15 years, 18 years, something like that. So I, my suggestion would be that we give, because nobody's tonight going to offer up $8 million in cuts. I just don't see that happening. We give Dawn direction to at least come back with a proposed reduction of what that looks like, of what 8 million looks like. And it may involve the sheriff, it may involve capital improvements, it may involve all sorts of things. Just make sure that we publicly tell the public what we're doing, so that everybody gets to come and defend their position in front of us as tonight was presented.
Agreed.
Because tonight was very much a focus on the increase in the budget, property insurance, food cost going up, the cost of living, right? There, I didn't see anybody here about pickleball. No, there wasn't a constituency group in here about pickleball. But I will guarantee you, there's at least 100 that'll show up if you tell them we're going to defund pickleball. I guarantee. So to be fair to everyone in this debate, and we'll see where the, you know, where it all falls down. You know, one thing I was, I was thinking and processing in this, and I think this should all be on the table, we did this during the recession, I'll give up my MSTU. You know, that's 300,000 bucks right there. If everybody else is willing to give up their MSTUs, I'll give up my MSTU. That's 300,000. And that's where it's got to start. It's got to start there. And whatever you were going to do for your constituents with your district dollars, that goes out the window. Ed, I don't know about your plan, maybe you've got a better plan, but I just, that's the kind of conversation we have to have. And fair enough, we do. So I am more than happy to start reading the resolutions that are before us.
We have one more light.
But I would, but I would, I would follow that, or I will do it ahead of time. I'd make a motion that we ask of the administrator to bring back on the 26th a proposed reduction of 8 million that we can talk about, that can at least be discussed. Because tonight, we can't talk about it because we don't have anything to really base it on. Like, which department gets 10% of a cut, 2% of a cut? You know, does 2% put this department out of business? Does 10% take this department out of business? I think we need to know that and have that analysis to be able to make a decision.
We have lots of lights now. Commissioner Hurd.
We're required by law to have two hearings, and this is the first one. And we have to read resolutions about taxing authorities. And this, that, your proposal is, doesn't fulfill that obligation. Because, for example, I presume that the cuts are going to be taken out of countywide MSTU for stormwater and road maintenance, which is 13 million. Parks, which is 3.8 million. So it doesn't do us a bit of good to read these resolutions, to adopt these resolutions, and then to go, come back and change them. I don't, I don't think that that's... So then, are we going to read them as they are?
Yeah.
And then lower them?
Well, you may lower them, but at least Dawn would give you options to say, if you took $800,000 out of the parks budget, you took $2.3 million out of roads and stormwater, you took 6 million out of this budget, that gets you to your 8 million. And if you don't, and Sarah, if four of us don't agree with that, and we say, "No, we can't do that, we're not going to do that," then you can get to the number that we are at tonight with four votes. We're not going to get five, apparently, but you could certainly get to four. And even if we got halfway there, you're still not going to get five votes. That's not going to happen.
So your proposal is to adopt the budget that's presented tonight?
With the caveat, and I'll make, if you want the motion ahead of time, so you feel confident that I'm going to make the motion, but make the motion that we direct the staff to come back with $8 million worth of reductions, to be voted on in the final hearing.
Is that a motion? Let's hear from everybody and then make it.
Sure, I'm trying.
Please. Are you done, Commissioner Hurd? More than done? Commissioner Jenkins.
So my question to Commissioner Heatherington, is this something you're going to support?
No. No.
I'm not supporting 2.67.
No. So the theory of adopting where we're at tonight and revisiting it with the understanding that we're going to try to get, that at that point...
I'm asking for an effort. I'm not, I'm asking for an effort for the next, yes.
Are you going to support the theory that Doug just threw out there?
Yes, yes. I will support, I'm not supporting, I might not support the resolutions as presented. I support the theory that you're, we're going to adopt. I'm not voting for the countywide millage.
I understand what you're saying.
But what he's giving direction is, the way I understood it was, you're going to read each sheet. I may agree with some or disagree, as long as you have the proper amount of votes. Dawn was given direction to look at the overall budget for the next budget hearing, to see if he could trim 7 million. Whether you can or not, I don't know. Is that what I heard you saying?
Yes.
And I'll just make one final comment. It makes more sense to me to do this when we, when, have these conversations, when we align our priorities at the beginning of the year than have this very frustrating process during the middle of the budget.
End of your budget. It's not even the measure.
So it might make sense to have a strategic plan and set out our priorities and have a fiscal impact when we pick our commission priorities at the beginning of the year, so that way staff has appropriate direction to take it through that year.
I see your point. The only problem with that, and we hear that, not from you, Commissioner Heatherington, I respect you, we hear that, but I don't understand, like, when we do the capital improvement plans in May, we don't know what's going to be, what the climate's going to be in September. I understand this process. It's a weird process. I think most of the people in this room, hopefully the people watching, know, the five of us are not allowed to speak to each other outside of this room. So my point is, is that if this looks frustrating to people, and they're like, "What are they doing? Why are they arguing? How come they haven't worked this out already?" We're not allowed to. This is, this is the workshop. This is the here. We had a workshop, and there was some controversy or some conflict, and then we came to this event. I would have assumed during that time in between the workshop and tonight, you had made your wishes perfectly clear, that there would have been some, some, you know, roll in the sleeves up. And I get that our budget people are doing exactly what they're supposed to be doing. You didn't know tonight that we would still be here. I agree with, look, between Commissioner Hurd and Commissioner Smith, they've been at this a long time. I've never seen anyone here for the budget. It always used to blow my mind. Sometimes one person would show up, they would make a public comment, and leave. We've had people here, the room filled with people, when we're deciding $3,000, and we would do a $600 million budget, and crickets. You know how many emails and phone calls we would get after we approved the budget with an increase, with a decrease, flat? Zero. I get 150 emails on something minor, but this had always been a process that worked. I, as the chair, is my responsibility to foster a give-and-take of conversation and opinions. I think we're doing that at a respectful level. Commissioner Heatherington has brought forward a suggestion. Look, and she says philosophically, I think philosophically, we don't agree on everything, but no one wants to do this. It's just a matter of how much pain are we willing to absorb in the process of doing it? I think Commissioner Smith's idea of, let's run through these, because we have to. And now, I think staff, whether they like it or not, have been given pretty clear direction on what is the situation. I prefer a, as Commissioner Jenkins was asking Commissioner Heatherington, "Will you support something going forward?" I think that's a reasonable question. If we get to the point two weeks from now, you can't be like, "Well, I don't approve it anyway." I mean, obviously, that's your prerogative, and I know you didn't say that. I'm just saying that, you know, that starts to be weird. No one wants an increase. We don't want to give you one. It's just a matter of how far will people go in the process. We'll go to staff first, and then to you, Commissioner Smith.
I do have a slight technical modification prior to reading the resolutions based on board direction today. It's a reduction. Based on the position that Sean Donahue had come. So there is a reduction in the countywide millage rate to 6.7573, which brings the overall countywide millage rate increase to 2.607%. And Commissioner Smith has those resolutions to read.
Mr. Donahue, congratulations. You were the first portion of the step in the right direction. We just need that to happen, you know, 200 more times. Commissioner Smith.
Yeah, I just want to give you two examples, and then I'll make, start, or I'll make the motion for the ask of Dawn. Two things that came to us over the course of this year that we were pressured to accelerate, increase, do whatever humanly possible to make them happy, happen. One was the boat ramps at Sandsport Park. And then the second one, I just lost it. But there was another issue that came forward that wasn't really in our radar screen, built into our radar screen, and we reacted to the public's request of us to do so. And that's why sometimes, in the best of intentions in aligning what you think ought to happen in the beginning of the year and what happens in September relative to your budget, just don't always align. With that, I would move...
One more point to your suggestion. I would also give direction that we don't cut a dollar that jeopardizes a grant. You know what I'm saying?
I, let me make my motion, then you can...
I'm just saying that...
So I would, so...
You don't want to give a dollar up that costs you $2 to give up.
So I would, I would make a motion that we ask the administrator and staff to come back with recommendations, not mandates, not whatever, but recommendations that achieve...
0% increase.
A 0% increase over last year's budget, which would effectively be 7.9, 8 million dollars...
Last year's millage.
Last year's millage, I'm sorry. Which would effectively be 7, 9, 8 million dollars.
7,950,000.
You got, you got one back already.
Hmm?
That's Sean's person. Go ahead. Is that's a motion?
That's my motion, prior to making these motions.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Smith. I think we've all heard it. Everyone clear on that motion at this point? Seconded by Commissioner Jenkins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, with that, understanding that we will come back in two weeks with options? Huh?
Nothing.
You have the copies.
I would move the first taxing authority, which is Board of County Commissioners, countywide rollback rate is 5.9551, percentage of increase over the rollback rate is 13.47. The tentative millage rate would be set at 6.7573.
Second? Okay, we have...
Can I have your first second?
Is that a...
That's a motion.
Okay.
Is it a paper package of this? Because I can't read this screen. Thank you.
I can read it, but I got to go like that.
Well, he's going to read them.
I can make it bigger. You want me to make it bigger?
That's fine.
I just want to know what he's...
Commissioner Smith will read them. How it works, Commissioner Smith will read through approximately 25 of these, and then someone else will second it. I will call, what?
34, apparently.
34 of these. It's, it's really exciting.
I have no more iced tea left.
Very exciting. I will, someone will second it, I will announce the vote, and we'll move on. Let's, and it's 8:36. So we had one, it was, we have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Hurd. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
The motion carries... It was... We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Hurd. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
The motion carries four to one with Commissioner Heatherington dissenting.
Okay. I would move taxing authority, Board of County Commissioners, item B, Board of County Commissioners, countywide, fund total 268,231,550.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Hurd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries four to one with Commissioner Heatherington dissenting.
I'd move item C, which is taxing authority, District 1 MSTU rollback rate 0.0718. Percentage of increase over the rollback rate, a reduction of 0.56. Tendative millage rate to be set at 0.0714.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Hurd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I would move item D, as in David, taxing authority, District 1 MSTU, fund total 337,958.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Hurd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries unanimously.
I'd move item E, as in Edward, taxing authority, District 2 MSTU, rollback rate 0.0898. Percentage of increase over the rollback rate, a reduction of 1.11%. Tendative millage rate to be set at 0.0888.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Hurd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Don't leave. This is the most exciting part. Commissioner Smith?
Move item F, which is taxing authority, District 2 MSTU, fund total 215,000.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Jenkins. All those in favor?
Aye.
He's kidding.
He's kidding. This is paint drying here, bud.
Yeah, this is pain.
Very, very exciting. They're my ride back to Palm City. I don't have a car. Oh, man, you're going to... We still got a public comment. You're not allowed to make more than three public comments in one day. Joke. Commissioner Smith, please continue.
I'd move item G, which is taxing authority, District 3 MSTU, rollback rate 0.0419. Percentage of increase over the rollback rate, a reduction of 3.58%. Tendative millage rate to be set at 0.0404.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Hurd. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
Move item H, taxing authority, District 3 MSTU, fund total 208,000.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Hurd. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
Move item I, taxing authority, District 4 MSTU, rollback rate 0.0570. Percentage of increase over the rollback rate is a reduction of 0.70. Tendative millage rate to be set at 0.0566.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Hurd. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
Move item J, which is taxing authority, District 4 MSTU, fund total 214,390.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Hurd. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
Move item K, which is District 5 MSTU, rollback rate is 0.0606. Percentage of increase over the rollback rate is 33.5%. Tendative millage rate to be set at 0.0809.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Hurd. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Move item L, as in Larry, taxing authority, District 5 MSTU, fund total 370,000.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Hurd. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
Move item M, which is special taxing authority, which is Special District A-61, Hutchinson Island MSTU, rollback rate is 0.1995. Percentage of increase over the rollback rate is a reduction of 0.80. Millage rate... Tendative millage rate to be set at 0.1979.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Hurd. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
Move item N, as in Nancy, taxing authority, Special District A-61, Hutchinson Island MSTU, fund total 392,100.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Hurd. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
Move items O, as in Oscar, taxing authority, Fire Rescue MSTU, unincorporated, rollback rate 2.3895. Percentage of increase over the rollback rate, 13.00. Tendative millage rate to be set at 2.7002.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Jenkins. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
The motion carries four to one with Commissioner Hurd dissenting.
Taxing authority, Fire... I'm sorry. Move item P, taxing authority, Fire Rescue MSTU, unincorporated, 71,305,530.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Jenkins. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
The motion carries four to one with Commissioner Hurd dissenting.
Move item Q, taxing authority, countywide MSTU, unincorporated, stormwater and road maintenance, rollback rate 0.5384. Percentage of increase over the rollback rate, 11.78. Tendative millage rate to be set at 0.6018.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Hurd. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Are you opposed? The motion... Let me restate that. The motion passes four to one with Commissioner Heatherington dissenting.
Move item R, taxing authority, countywide MSTU, unincorporated, stormwater and road maintenance, 12,716,658.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Hurd. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries four to one with Commissioner Heatherington dissenting.
Move item S, taxing authority, MSTU, Parks, Recreation, rollback rate 0.1672. Percentage of increase over the rollback rate, a reduction of 1.79. Tendative millage rate to be set at 0.1642.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Hurd. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries four to one with Commissioner Heatherington dissenting.
Move item T, as in Tom, taxing authority, MSTU, Parks and Recreation, fund total 3,778. And 3,778,543.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Hurd. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
The motion carries four to one with Commissioner Heatherington dissenting.
Move item U, non-taxing fund, general unincorporated fund, fund total 6,741,249.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Hurd. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Move item V, non-taxing fund, building and permitting, fund total 10,182,000. Even.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Hurd. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries four to one with Commissioner Heatherington dissenting.
Move item W, non...
Excuse me? Let me restate that. That last motion carries 5-0 unanimously.
Move item W, non-taxing fund, impact fees, fund total 6,233,000.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Hurd. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
Move item X, non-taxing fund, special revenue, fund total 27,769,840.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Hurd. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Move item Y, non-taxing fund, grants, fund total 828,862.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Hurd. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries four to one with Commissioner Heatherington dissenting.
Move item Z, as in Zebra, non-taxing fund, other debt service, fund total 8,523,977.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Hurd. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Move item double A, non-taxing fund, other capital projects, fund total 13,299,371.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Hurd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The motion carries four to one with Commissioner Heatherington dissenting.
Move item double B, non-taxing fund, utilities enterprise, fund total 110,25,342.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Hurd. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Move item double C, non-taxing fund, Waze Enterprise, fund total 46,314,044.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Hurd. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries four to one with Commissioner Heatherington dissenting.
Move item double D, non-taxing fund, Airport Enterprise, fund total 2,533,252.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Hurd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Opposed?
No, we're all fun. We used to have... We used to call that Dawn Donaldson.
Yes, I would do that.
We're having no fun. This is no fun today.
That motion passes unanimously.
What am I supposed to do?
Nothing.
We used to do...
I was reminiscing about when we actually had fun.
Move item Eddie Edward.
There we go.
I know an Eddie Edwards.
Non-taxing fund, Golf Course Enterprise, fund total 2,300,000.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Hurd. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries four to one with Commissioner Heatherington dissenting.
Move item Freddie Fred, non-taxing fund, internal service funds, fund total 38,352,259.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Hurd. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
The motion carries four to one with Commissioner Heatherington dissenting.
I don't know what to come up with for two Gs.
Greta Garbo.
Greta Garbo. Wow, very good. Move item double G, Greta Garbo, non-taxing fund, trust, fund total 80,000.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Hurd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
Move item double H, non-taxing fund. You got one for that?
Hugh Hefner.
Hugh Hef...
Harry Hamlin.
Yeah, Harry Hamlin's much better. Got another one?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the last one.
That's the last one, so make it good.
I got nothing left.
You got nothing? That's it? All right. Move double H, non-taxing fund, community redevelopment area trust, fund total 8,726,377.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Hurd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Smith, thank you for doing that.
Welcome.
Commissioner Hurd, Commissioner Jenkins, Commissioner Heatherington, thank you. Let's just be clear before we go to closing public comment.